Princeton Packard. Could you call the row, please?
Ms. Capizolli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Carmilla?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sproul?
Here.
Mr. Texerney?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Ullman? Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. The announcements, you heard the last couple of weeks, but let me emphasize again, the Master Plan Committee will be meeting on the 11th of October at 9:30, that's next Wednesday, in the Common Room. And the discussion will be somewhat about West Drive and somewhat about Lee's report on the future of the master plan. So you've been sent these documents. I hope that as many of you as can will be present for this discussion for this evening. Mr. Solo can't be with us this evening, so I'm going to table the ordinance referrals discussion until the next planning board meeting, which is two weeks from today.
October 19th.
Hmm?
October 19th.
October 19th, so you can mark that on your calendar. And I think we'll move on to the hearing for this evening, which is 775 Princeton LLC, and it's a major subdivision with variances, 775 State Road, Block 901, Lot 16. I'm going to ask our land use engineer, Jack West, to give the report on this, and then I'll ask Mr. Bridger if he has anything to say, and Mr. Stankis if he has anything to add. Jack? Do you want to be sworn in?
Ms. Gunning?
Yes.
I just want to mention, I'm going to recuse myself on this application. I have a client who's within the 200-foot radius, so...
You have another one there? Thank you, we're all now mic'd. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lee told us he was sick, but we think he's watching the Yankee game tonight. So this is an application, it's 775 State Road, it's the application for Bottle King for preliminary and final site plan with variances. It's known as Block 901, Lot 16. It's a 1.86 acre parcel. There isn't existing 3,092 square foot building on the site. It's the former Taylor rental. Currently, the site is being used for storage of cars. The site, the Van Horn Brook flows through the rear of the property, so there's a lot of wetlands associated with it. There's commercial uses to the north, south, west, and then to the east is the Old Orchard Residential Development.
Jack, could we mark that as PB1? And that's from the plan set marked up?
Yes, this is a rendering of the site plan.
And could you just give us the number it is from the plan set? It's in the bottom, I think.
What's your sheet number?
Three of 11.
Oh, there it is.
Date of February 3rd, 2017.
Sheet three of 11. The project calls for the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new 12,750 square foot liquor store. The majority of the building is one-story, however, there is a mezzanine level in the back of the store. Building height ranges from, the majority of the building is 24 feet high, there is a portion that's 32 feet and a quarter inches tall. There's 75 parking spaces proposed, also with the site improvement sidewalks, lighting, and landscaping, and trash enclosure. Stormwater management for the site will be handled in a number of ways. There's a bio-retention basin along the northern part of the property, there's underground infiltration trenches under the parking lot, and then there's porous pavement will be utilized in the rear of the parking lot. Applicant is requesting a number of variances, 16 variances, including front yard setback for the flagpole and parking, side yard setback for the building. Two loading spaces are required, one is proposed. The size of the parking stalls, nine by 19 is required. They're actually, they have nine by 38-foot spaces in the rear, and that's going to be stacked parking. There's a number of variances for landscaping, the number of trees, the size of the landscaped aisles, and also for the height of the light poles, and several sign variances. I preface that by, when the applicant went to the SPRAB, there was a lot of discussion about the number of variances. The applicant has agreed to eliminate a number of those variances. I'm not sure of the final count, so when they give their testimony, they'll tell you exactly what variances will be eliminated. As far as the staff memos, some of the major items that we've requested was that sidewalk be extended across the front of the property, bike racks in proximity to the front of the building. The applicant's traffic engineer should be prepared to address egress to the site. The level of service is poor, obviously during rush hour times. The applicant should be prepared to address all of the comments in the staff memos from Brian Stankis, our traffic engineer, mine, and Derek's memo. The, some of the landscape comments, or some of the, that they can't conform with, we would recommend that if they can't plant the number of trees required, that they either increase the size of what they're planting, or that they could do the contribution for trees that they can't fit on-site. Concern is, there's a retaining wall that runs along the north and rear of the property. The retaining wall is going to be a dominant feature, it ranges from anywhere from one foot to six foot high, and the applicant maybe should look into some type of more decorative wall. The applicant should address all of the comments in Dan Dobremilsky's memo, and we would recommend that the application be reviewed by the Landscape Subcommittee. We would recommend that the dumpster be masonry, not wood, so it holds up better to trucks backing in and out. Their staff did have a concern with maneuverability of both the loading zone and the trash enclosure, so the applicant should be prepared to discuss that tonight. In both cases, we feel it's awkward, both for the loading zone and for the trash truck to get in and out of the site, so the applicant should be prepared to talk about that. The plan was reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee, and again, they also recommend the sidewalk across the front, that the site be curved throughout. Is a plan for a rapid flashing beacon at Herrentown, and the application to the north of them was required to contribute towards that, and we would recommend that this applicant contribute towards the installation of the rapid flashing beacon. And again, Traffic Safety also commented on the accessibility of the loading zone and the dumpster area. PEC has reviewed the application. They were not satisfied with the response for the building, the green building checklist, so I think the applicant should address those concerns. PEC did recommend denying all of the variances, and suggested that the parking and impervious coverage be reduced, that they provide an updated LOI. They use porous pavement on the entire parking lot, provide covered bike racks and shower for bike-riding employees, provide for organic waste pickup, use clean energy incentive and Energy Star appliances, consider solar and EV charging stations, recycle the demo from the demo of the existing building, use FSC lumber, and avoid red list material. SPRAB has reviewed the application. They did recommend approving some of the variances, one for building height, one for the number of loading spaces, and also the stacked parking in the rear, and the sign with a non-opague sign color. And I'm not sure I can explain that one, because I've read the ordinance several times, and it's, it's an odd one. Then they did recommend that, they also recommended the sidewalk across the front, and the majority of the variances be eliminated, and I think the applicant will go over that in detail. Such as the flagpole, moving the cart corral, they can modify the landscape aisles to conform, remove one of the signs on the northeast facade that's really not visible, and demonstrate why they can't comply with the side yard setback along here for the building. Essentially, that's it for the applicant. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Brian is here, and Derek is here.
Right. Are there questions for Mr. West? Mr. Bridger, did you want to add anything to this?
No, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Why don't we swear you in?
Sir.
Thanks. Derek, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you want to...
Want to get Brian, or?
And do you want to swear, Brian?
Likewise, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully, to the extent you're going to be testifying?
I do.
Thank you.
Brian, did you want to add anything to?
The only, the only two other issues, in addition to what Jack said, I think the, a couple of issues that we suggested that the applicant comment on is the status of any coordination with the DOT's Bureau of Major Access, because the access will be under their jurisdiction.
We can't hear you.
No?
No.
Is that, I usually don't have that problem, but is that better?
He said, he had the table.
Okay. We suggested that the applicant discuss the status of coordination with the DOT regarding an access permit for this driveway, which will be required, and also the issue of site distance to the left and the right for vehicles exiting, because it's on the inside of a curve.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I do have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the rapid flashing beacon. Is that, I assume flashes yellow for people on 206 and red toward Herrentown? How is that?
No, this is, it'll be exactly the same as the ones that are on Alexander by, that the university did for the Arts and Transit Project. So basically, when a pedestrian comes up, they push the button, and there'll be yellow flashing on the highway. It's just really a warning. There's no, not a, it doesn't, not red for actually stop, although obviously they have to stop for somebody in a crosswalk.
So is there a crosswalk there over to?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Porter, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted, for the record, to identify the various reports that the board has received, and the applicant will address. We've just heard the outline of Mr. Solo's report of September 14th. There's Mr. Dobremilsky's report of April 13. There's a report from the Traffic Safety Committee of April 7. There's the report from Princeton Environmental Commission of July 17. There is report from the Shade Tree Commission of July 25, and from the Site Plan Review Advisory Board of September 12, and also the Engineering and Zoning Report from Mr. West and Mr. Bridger, July 21. And that has attached to it a report from IH Engineers dated July 14, and also the report from Stormwater Management dated June 29, and I guess something forwarded from Emergency Services dated, sent March 10. Those are all 2017, and those all have recommendations that I'm sure the applicant will respond to.
All right, and I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant now. If you'd come forward, give your name, be sworn in, and, yes, but be sure you use the microphone, so you're, also, any witnesses that you have, maybe we could swear them in now, so that we can move along.
Sir, I'm waiting for a planner to join us today, but waiting on someone else up. The planner's on his way. I think I have one more.
Yes, I know.
So let me first swear you in, Mr. Lehrer, if correct?
Mr. Lehrer, yes.
Do you, if we swear everyone, and including lawyers to the extent they lapse into testimony, so I'm asking if you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
To my left, I have David Schmidt, who is our site engineer. To my right, I have Mr. Ken Friedman, who is a principal of Bottle King. I have Steve Schwartz, our architect, and I have Scott Kennel, who is our traffic consultant.
And gentlemen, individually, if you'd respond to the question of whether you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this application, I'd ask you if, if in the affirmative, say yes, and state your name for the record.
Yes, I do, Ken Friedman. Yes, I do, Ken Friedman.
I do, David Schmidt.
Yes, I do, Stephen Schwartz.
Yes, I do, Scott Kennel.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
In a previous application where Mr. Schmidt appeared, I advised the board that in a unrelated application in a different town, he represented my client, so, but I don't review, I don't view that as a conflict.
I do not see it as either.
Okay. Thank you, board members. It's been a long haul for us, and we're glad to be in front of you this evening. I can tell you that my client is called 775 Princeton LLC. They are the contract purchaser, an applicant of the property that is identified as Block 901, Lot 16, located at 775 State Road in Princeton. The property is approximately 1.86 acres in size, but after a 15-foot frontage dedication to the state of New Jersey, the site will be reduced in size to about 1.7 acres in size. The property is a permitted use and is located in this S2 service zone, which is a permitted use for the liquor store and the gourmet food associated use. Mr. Porter, I just wanted to confirm that jurisdiction is proper, and that all notices are acceptable.
Yes, Ms. Cetroneo confirms then.
Thank you so much. We are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval this evening to demolish an existing 3,000-square-foot masonry building, and to remove the gravel parking lot used as storage for that, a local automobile dealer, and to construct a modern and very tastefully designed 12,750-square-foot one-story liquor store, which will include the sale of gourmet foods. These improvements include 75 parking spaces, a bio-retention basin, a shopping cart corral, a trash dumpster, a loading dock, and associated retaining walls and landscaping. There are a number of variances, I'm not going to regurgitate them, they're in your reports. We are going to eliminate a number of those variances, and I will, as we go through the hearing tonight, I'll indicate which ones, and Mr. Schmidt will indicate which ones have been eliminated. We had a very productive discussion with the SPRAB, and we feel that that was a very useful exercise, and was able to, we are able to now tell you that we can eliminate a number of variances. As you'll hear from our witnesses, we are in essence taking a visually unattractive and unproductive site, and turning it into a site that will be visually attractive and productive business to the community. I have five witnesses, which I've indicated. Dave Schmidt will be my first witness.
I'm Dave Schmidt, from DS Engineering. Do you need to hear my credentials, or?
Do you want to just briefly tell us your credentials?
Dave J. Schmidt, PE, President of DS Engineering. I have a civil degree at, from NJIT. I'm a New Jersey professional engineer, license numbers 39 and 409. I have 21 professional years' experience, I have overall 31 years' experience, and I have been in front of this planning board, as well as the zoning board.
Thank you very much, we accept your credentials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schmidt, did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the plans that have been presented to this board?
Yes, I have.
Can he speak close to the mic?
The plans have been prepared by me.
And you've heard my introduction, but what is, what is being proposed by this applicant?
We're proposing on Lot 16 and Block 901, physical address 775 State Road, Route 206. We're presenting a Bottle King liquor store at the site.
All right, and did you prepare a color rendering of the, of the original site plan that you submitted?
Yes, I did.
And can you have that marked, or has it already been marked as A1?
It has not been marked, it is on the easel, it's labeled display map, it's dated September 22nd, 2017, and it's a rendering of the site plan that was submitted to your, to the planning board.
Can you just mark it as A1, please, and put today's date?
What's the, what's the underlying, is that sheet what of what?
Yes.
What's sheet number? What is it?
It's a display map of all the sheets put together.
So it's not an individual, it's not just one sheet?
No, I have the site plan, I have the landscape issues on there, I have a slew of different, but it puts it all together.
Right. And if you could just walk the board through the existing conditions on the property?
Okay, I'm going to go somewhat quickly, because Jack pretty much hit a lot of the items, so, the property is located on the northbound of Route 206. Familiar yourself with the map. This is Route 206. This is north, this is the south of the building, I'm using this as the west, and I'm using this as the west, and this is the east. The north arrow goes on a skew, so we've been moving back, what's north, south, east, west, but in the memo, so I'm going to note it again, that this will be the north side, this will be the south, the west, and then this is the east. The total lot area is 1.8662 acres, the property is zone Service District 2. We propose to construct a 12,750 liquor store, which is permitted in the S2 zone, with a parking area, lighting, signage, and other improvements. The property is visually unattractive, currently used as a storage overflow for new automobiles for Baker, Chrysler Jeep, Dodge, and Ram. There's an existing structure, bacon on the property, which will be removed. There's also gravel parking area, lot, which will be replaced. The property is currently 1.86 acres, but a 15-foot portion along the roadway here, along Route 206, will be dedicated to NJDOT, and which will reduce the lot area to 1.78 acres. The history of the property, this property used to be owned as Taylor Rental, it was a rental business. In the rear of the property, as Jack's mentioned, there's a stream, the Van Horn Brook, there's wetlands, wetland buffers, a riparian zone, 100-year flood plain, and a flood hazard zone exists on the property.
Can you also describe what's surrounding the subject site?
As Jack also mentioned, to the north, south, and west, the north, south, and the west area over here is all S2 zone, and over here is the R2 zone.
Okay, just briefly, we've already heard Jack talk about what this project entails. If you could just summarize some of the things that are included in this proposal?
What we're proposing to do is we're going to knock down the existing building, the timber ties, the concrete pad, and other old improvements will be removed. Construct a 12,750-square-foot one-story building. The building height is mainly 22 feet, but the building front facade is 32, which we're requesting a variance. Parking, we're proposing 75 parking spaces. The requirement is one space per 175 square feet, which requires 73 parking spots. We're paving and striping the area, we're proposing four designated handicap spaces. We have five stacked spaces in the rear, which is located in this area for employee parking. In the holiday peak areas, the owner needs additional parking, because he has more employees show up, so we came up an idea that we could just stack it, that way we can get two spots with lesser aisleways, so it was more efficient to stack the parking and provide the additional parking during the holiday events.
So that, that area is intended for, for employees during the high season?
That is correct.
Okay.
The remainder spaces are per your ordinance, which is 19 by 9. The entire parking area will be encompassed by Belgium block curbing, except for the entrance, which needs to be a NJDOT concrete curb, so all the perimeter parking is Belgium block, except in the very beginning, which will be a concrete curb. It's also required that the whole entire frontage also be curbed, which is also going to be a concrete curb per NJDOT requirements. There are bollards located in a portion of the building. When Steve Schwartz gives his testimony and shows you his rendering, a portion of the building has glassed areas. So what we did is, just in the front area where the entrance is, there's about six bollards, so that no cars can enter the building, or jump the curb, and then go into the glassed area. So we placed bollards in front of the building. We're proposing a six-foot wide sidewalk north and west of the building. We have sufficient parking, this is the area where most of the parking is, we provided a sidewalk on the north side, and we provided a sidewalk to the west side. Retaining walls are located on the perimeter of the parking lot, mainly, it starts in the middle of the building, we wrap around with a two-foot to three-foot wall, in some areas it comes to be five and a half, and then wraps around and ends to a three-foot wall.
And you did everything you really could to maintain the integrity of the riparian zone, correct?
That is correct. All the existing vegetation is best possible that is not gravel, is going to remain intact. So it's going to be a pretty nice, it's a very vegetated area, it's going to be a nice view shed that's going to be undisturbed forever, it's a, it's a nice portion of the site that's not going to be disturbed at all. We have a loading and unloading area.
There may be some misunderstanding by the staff as to loading and loading, unloading. We're coming, they're all box trucks, correct?
That is correct.
And they're going to enter and then just come to the one location? Maybe you can show the board where the loading area is, and why that one loading area is more than sufficient?
Well, Ken Friedman has been in the business for many years, he understands the business. He only needed one loading area, which were located in the rear where there are two doors to access, the trucks come in from the entrance, they go in a clockwise direction, and then they stop the car by the loading area, and then they unload the truck. There's no need to back the truck into the building, they unload it side entering. So that's how he intends to move his merchandise in and out of the facility, and most of the times, these deliveries are done during business-closed hours, off-peak times.
And it's your opinion, as a professional engineer, that the one loading area for this particular site is more than sufficient?
It is my, it is my opinion, yes.
Okay.
The proposed site plan will actually reduce the amount of impervious surface coverage that is at the site. The existing site is, as we've been talking, it has automobiles, and it's been gravelled, and it used to be a Taylor rental. The impervious surface coverage originally was 46,283 square feet. The proposed impervious area is 46,209 square feet. We're reducing the impervious surface coverage by 74 square feet.
And, and you've also done your truck turning templates, which show that trucks can adequately ingress and egress this site?
Right. Before you really get into the design phase, and the nuts and bolts of a project, you look at the entrance, you look at the movability of how the site is going to operate, and can it function the way Mr. Friedman would like to handle it? So, you know, the truck template is one of the first things that we do, I work with Scott Kennel, and in addition with the NJDOT entrance, what is the best location? These are the key elements you do when you're starting a site plan. So we had... So we had the truck template done at the very start, so I do have eight and a half by eleven and I also have, I guess, an exhibit which will be A-two, which is the larger.
Mr. Porter, this is actually an exhibit we'll call the turning template, A-two. And Mr. Schmidt, what the board members are being provided, that is the same that is shown on the easel, correct?
That is correct. It is the truck template for a single-unit thirty-foot truck. The template was put on the site plan, which is part of your construction set, which is sheet three. The trucks access the site via the entrance and continue in an easterly direction. They make the turn, which shows that it can make the turn around, around the building, through all the turns, and then exit out of the site and off to two oh six. The truck template provided is in accordance with the Ashtoe SU dash thirty vehicle template. The truck movements achieve full movements per this diagram.
Just briefly talk about ingress and egress to this site.
Excuse me, there was also a question about the turning for the dumpster area and the garage.
I do have that if you wanna wait or I can go over it now.
This isn't addressing that.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Okay. Ingress and egress. We have the STS Service Tire Center across the street. They have an existing entrance located where I'm pointing where our proposed entrance is. It was our thought that this would be the best access. We tried to align it as best as possible for these cars pulling out and for us pulling out. So that was the area that we thought would be the best place to put an access point. In a discussion with Ken Friedman, he would also like full movements at this access point, which means an entrance in and two exits out, one for the left and the right. We agree with the history and experience that we have with the DOT. We believe that we are going to get these full movements. Testimony from our traffic engineer will go more detail of why we believe that, but it's just our experience that we have gotten this based on the traffic rates that are at this two oh six and this entrance. The entrance width will be seventy-eight feet. We're gonna have to put a depressed curb. The throat, which is the entrance neck in, is at thirty-seven feet, as again, it's a fifteen-foot entrance in and two eleven-foot wide aisles going out. We will provide typical striping and signage will be provided, i.e. stop signs, stop bars, and we have painted directional hours provided on the plans. The site plan is designed to be accessible for emergency vehicles. These vehicles will be able to maneuver readily through the site. I do provide an NJDOT site triangle. It's shown on the plans. The proposed access has clear sight and provides a safe ingress and egress.
In terms of the retaining walls, just tell us, we know that they're on the site, but what kind of materials they will be?
I did provide a detail. I didn't provide the color. We're gonna put a landscape block retaining wall. It's provided, I believe, on the ladder sheets of the sets. We're gonna put a gray retaining wall. It's a, the wall is not excessive in height. I mean, we have a section or two that might be five, five and a half feet. Most of the wall is three-foot high. It's gonna be a decorative landscape block and I'll work with the landscape subcommittee to pick out the exact landscape block that they would like, but it is an attractive type of material.
In terms of the dumpster, just show the board where the location is.
The location is in the northeast corner, located right at the corner of the site. It's not a great location, but it was what we originally came up with, with based on the information I had from the client. We were screening it with a board and onboard fence. It's surrounded by eight upright junipers that have an average height between twelve to fifteen feet.
Go back to the board onboard. We will agree, though, to change that to a masonry to comply with the town's requirement?
That is correct.
Okay, so we agree that we will change that to comply with your standard as masonry. Whatever your standard is, we will comply, correct?
Correct. So our original plan, when I met with the client, was the access to the dumpster was to have three ninety-gallon containers in the garbage enclosure. The garbage truck would enter the site in the early morning hours, pull up to the dumpster, they roll out the thirty, ninety-gallon containers, and then they load it into the truck and on their way they would go. This is also true for the cardboard that they store in there. These cardboard squares are cut and bundled and stacked into this enclosure and the truck will come in, stop at the enclosure, unload or load the cardboard into their truck and move in a clockwise direction. With the information we had from the memos and the concerns that we have, and I'm gonna get into it when I get the other display map up, is we have modified the dumpster location so that you have a full movement where a front-end load garbage truck can pick up the can and will get away from the ninety-foot containers. We'll pick up and then dump without rolling containers out. So we adjusted the location of the dumpster, but I'll get to that when I add up the display map.
We also show a cart corral and just identify the location currently and then, but indicate that we will comply with the SPRAB's request to move that.
We have located a cart corral on the north side of the property. I was not aware that a cart corral would be considered a structure. Since it's considered a structure, I thus need a variance. We will, as I show on the display map down below, is relocate the cart corral to the building side so it avoids the variance for side yard setback.
You're also proposing a bioretention basin and it'll meet all local and state requirements, correct?
That is correct. We have three different types of stormwater facilities. We have, in the northwest corner, is your typical bioretention basin. We have an infiltration trench at the north parking lot and then in the rear where is the stacked parking, I will have porous pavement.
Okay. In terms of lighting, it will be LED lighting?
All lighting is proposed to be LED. We have a total of thirteen lights. Six lights are mounted on the building, seven lights located in the parking lot. The lighting meets the Princeton standard, Princeton standards, and we have the lights set at sixteen feet. I find out that that is a variance and we are willing to reduce that to fourteen feet.
Okay. And in terms of landscaping, can you just briefly talk about landscaping?
We have nine trees that we're proposing to remove. We have, per the previous application for Brandon Baker, when we were getting permission to park the cars on the site, we had to provide evergreen trees located in the west part of the property at a stagger to shield the cars. This was just a temporary thing that we had to do. Those trees are going to be relocated, probably not onsite, because if you've been out there, they're not the most healthy-looking trees and I don't feel like reusing the trees as they don't look to what's the standard that Kenneth Friedman's going to use, so I'm just gonna relocate them to a different site.
You're saying you're removing them?
There are, there were, yes.
For purposes of this site, they're being removed?
They were removed, they were put there really temporary for screening, right? The quality of these trees are not the greatest and my landscape architect, who I have a certified landscape architect, looked at them and he said there's just, he would not want to place these or replant these.
And Mr. Dobromowski said he didn't think they'd survive as well.
I think he was being kind. Currently, we were proposing fourteen trees. I think there was just an error in calking, but we originally planted fourteen trees. Four are red maple, two are dogwoods, and eight are green zalkovas. We're screening the dumpsters with junipers, screening the front parking lot area with boxwoods, and screening the adjacent uses with various-sized landscaping. The landscaping around the retaining wall is arborvitae, then it's mixed in with Carl Foster feathered grass and various other grasses. Dan Dobromowski and Associates Landscape Memorandum dated April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen to Jack West. I have a certified landscape architect that works for me. His name is Tim Fox. He's a very local landscape architect, been doing this for forty years. He prepares my landscape plans. I provided him the SPRAB reports. I provided all the reports and we went over all the comments that came up in the review memorandums or in the SPRAB meetings and we have a revised plan that pretty much addresses most of the comments in Dan's review memo as well as the memos that were provided by the township.
You and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this plan after the SPRAB meeting and I asked you to put together a supplemental plan. What I'd like you to do is just show the board, because, board members, what we've done now by this supplemental plan is attempt to listen and cooperate with your professionals and SPRAB to minimize the number of variances and so we are going to show you tonight a supplemental plan that does a lot to eliminate a number of variances. Why don't you show that as A-three right now? Okay, now, on August ninth, we attended the Site Plan Review Advisory Board meeting on this application, correct?
That is correct.
And you've also reviewed the September twelfth, two thousand seventeen memorandum of SPRAB outlining their recommendations, have you not?
I have.
And based upon the SPRAB meeting, the applicant can eliminate a number of variances. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And at my request, I asked you to prepare an exhibit. You've now marked it. And what I'd like you to do is describe the revision as shown on that plan and just talk about the things that have been done and why we've eliminated a number of variances.
Okay, it's Exhibit A-three. It's color rendering. I labeled it Display Map Two. It's dated September twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. We added the sidewalk along Route two oh six and up to the building, so as a request, we added the sidewalk and we also located it up into the, up through the throat to the building. We moved the flagpole, which was in a variance.
So that eliminates that variance, correct?
Yes.
It was a variance because of the closeness to the front line?
We moved the flagpole that was too close and moved it back, so we're twenty-five feet away, so that variance has been eliminated. We moved the cart corral, which was located on the northern property line, closer to the building, so that eliminated that variance. The landscape aisle, which we had the closest to the building, was not at nine feet. We adjusted that, so that eliminated the landscape aisle variance.
Mr. Porter, by the way, I will summarize what now is a variance, so we'll make it easier for you and what's been eliminated and what still remains.
Because we have a list of sixteen.
Yeah, we've eliminated quite a few of them.
So you'll summarize with respect to the list of sixteen, so the board knows what is still before it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt. Keep going, I'm sorry.
Okay, we removed one of the facade signs from the building, so we removed that variance.
And just for a moment, Mr. Porter, the way that I read your ordinance is that if we eliminate one of the facade signs, then it's up to SPRAB to determine, it has its discretion to determine, since we are now only proposing one facade sign on the main frontage and a freestanding sign, which is actually a ground-mounted sign, SPRAB has a discretion to authorize that or the board has a discretion, so it's really technically not a variance any longer because we've eliminated the second facade sign. If you take a look at Mr. Solow's report, he indicates on page, page two, he says, "Section ten B dash two ninety-eight G permits one freestanding sign and one facade sign per lot. The Site Plan Review Advisory Board may permit both a freestanding sign and a facade sign when the proximity of the building to the street, the size of the building, or freestanding sign, or speed of traffic dictates the need for two signs." SPRAB has recommended both a freestanding and facade sign in their report. We've eliminated the other facade signs, so I believe we're in compliance.
That's correct.
Okay. You can continue.
Per the recommendation by SPRAB, they requested that maybe we reduce the parking spots from nine by nineteen to nine by eighteen, which is generally the size that's done throughout. Your ordinance is a little unusual to have nine by nineteen and they acknowledged that and they said, "Well, if you can get a little more space, wiggle room for more landscaping on the southern property line, can you, you know, at least, we'll permit reducing or accept you reducing the parking stall to nine by eighteen." And we did that and that moved the curb away from the property lines. We have additional lands to landscape the entire southerly property line. So before, I only had partial landscaping. I now provide landscaping along the entire southerly property line up to the wetlands. Per this SPRAB's September twelfth, two thousand seventeen letter, item six A, I'm gonna go through what they asked. Variance requested to reduce parking stall length from nineteen to eighteen, which we did. The timber guide rail, they're asking maybe we could take it off. I think for safety reasons, I like to leave it on there, so we did not able to do that. Vertical landscaping was revised. They're requesting some vertical landscaping to screen the building. They're concerned about the view from the street, so we went with three green giant arborvitae along the southerly property line to this extent. Figure you're driving down and your vision is going to be this way. You'll be screened by the existing building that's off our site and then we have these arborvitae at that side and they will grow to a height of twenty to twenty-five feet.
Those, there's thirteen of those, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
We also provided Carl Foster landscaping along the side of the southerly property line and in accordance with your memorandums, they're asking that we meet with the landscape subcommittee. We did an extensive landscape plan. We'd be more than happy to go over landscaping, ways of more mitigating the view. I believe we've mitigated it as best as we could, but we always could be willing to change or make modifications per the landscape subcommittee. There was concerns regarding the cars that were parking in front of the building, that they would like them to be screened, so we made a change to that. We are proposing to plant twenty-one winter gem boxwoods, which grow to a height between four to five feet. That is located in the front of this area. We also did an enhanced landscaping plan around the detention basin and again, this detention basin is not a deep detention basin. It varies from three feet to maybe four feet. It's not a deep, deep hole, but my landscape architect dressed up the perimeter of the detention basin and he also enhanced the entire landscaping to stay out of the state right away and then added the boxwoods and we have all types of different grasses. And Ken Friedman, who has other liquor stores, maintains his property very well. The landscaping will also have irrigated water. All the stuff that we put in is not gonna be just planted and then die. We're gonna have an irrigation system that's gonna continue to keep this green. He likes to keep a clean site and we have pictures and testimony for Kenneth Friedman to show what his sites look like. Additional shade trees were added. We had fourteen and we upped it to twenty-three. You're requesting twenty-two, so we have one extra shade tree.
That eliminates the variance.
That eliminates the variance. They also requested number nine, a berm is proposed to enhance the landscaping. Their concern, we have a proposed site plan that was just recently approved, so we added some landscaping here. There are thirty-four upright heinz juniper. They grow to a height of twelve to fifteen feet. And also, this proposed site plan, which I do have, also shows landscaping. They have a parking lot right here, so between my landscaping and landscaping by the others, it's gonna be a pretty nice landscape property line. The overall landscaping plan was revised to just all the The overall landscaping plan was revised to just all the comments in Dan's memorandum. I have no objections, like I said, I'm hitting it over again, but we will be more than happy to meet the Landscape Subcommittee and discuss the changes that we made.
On the freestanding sign, one of the requirements is that the address numbering the larger, or at least the same size as the lettering. We've, we have not met that requirement, but we have increased it from six inches to eight inches, correct?
Correct. We have the address at eight inches now. Normally, most of the site plans I've done with signs, we have six inches. At the SPRAG meeting, they were kind of scratching their head as Jack West was also about the OP color of the sign. It's kind of unusual to have the address as big as your, what you're putting there, and they agree that they would support the eight-inch sign.
Okay.
We...
Keep, I'm sorry.
In other comments that they had, they had a crosswalk added, which they wanted thermal plastic striping, so I added a crosswalk at the throat entrance by 206. And now we go to the shifted dumpster. The dumpster was located right in this area. I shifted it up so that the truck can come in, access it, back out, and then go around the building. The turning movements for the loading area has not changed, because we believe that works properly, so that...
So, in terms of dumpster, it's now a straight shot for...
It's a straight shot.
Okay. And you've also added a generator because, just in case, because of the weather we're encountering over the last number of years?
That came up just in the, over the, right next to the dumpster. Actually, where the dumpster originally was is where I put it, so...
Is that a variance? Where the generator is?
Is the generator a variance?
It's a structure.
But on 60 feet, though, right?
That's why I was asking. Because I thought you were...
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, other comments they had, that we revised the plans in accordance with Jack West, Derek Bridger's July 21st, 2017 memorandum. He had some lighting comments. He, so I added two lighting notes to the landscaping and lighting plan. One is all nonessential lighting will be turned off at 11 o'clock PM. All proposed lighting shall be LED. Also in the...
Could I just interrupt? I mean, you're referring to A1 on all these items. Is there a listing on A1, or can one be provided that explains all the changes that are reflected there and how they relate to the variances?
Absolutely, sure. I don't have it with me, but I can certainly provide it to you, Mr. Porter.
Okay, because we do need to make a record to understand what you've agreed to and how that relates to the...
Yes.
Eight or nine reports that I advised to begin with.
Yeah, what we're going to do is, as, I'm going to just go and identify the things that we can't comply with or won't, because of the site constraints, but for the most part, we can comply with most of all the, mostly all the comments. But if you want a summary of what the changes are, we're going to submit those plans, the revised plans, and I will provide you with a summary of what the changes are and the variances that are only left.
Can I just ask, I didn't quite hear what Mr. Bridger said. The generator will be a new variance?
No, it's back.
No, I was questioning whether it would be a variance. I couldn't see from here, but he said it meets the 60-foot setback, so it would not be a variance.
Okay, thank you.
Per Jack and Derek's July 21st memo, they had additional comments and recommendations. Number seven, details, concrete sidewalk will have five inches and 4,500 PSI. We agreed, and we'll do that. Pavement cross-section, we'll agree, the five-inch base, the two-inch top. Striped crosswalk, we provided, and we put it thermoplastic striping. I had reference to Hillsborough Township on the trash enclosure, which I will revise. If approved, the applicant will revise the trash enclosure to be masonry at the SPRAG meeting. I believe Jack West mentioned that he had, he can provide me with the standard detail that is acceptable to Princeton. We are providing 23 shade trees, so therefore, we don't need to provide a contribution. The landscaping was removed by the north...
Speak into the mic, please.
Yes. The landscaping was removed by the north side of the building as sidewalk as a present. Originally, I had some landscaping in this area. We made a quick change late before submission of moving the handicap, and I missed picking that up, and I took the landscaping out of the sidewalk.
You're not getting picked up.
Okay.
You need to be in the mic every time you turn around.
I got you.
If I could just summarize for the board, for your information, what Dave has just testified to. We have eliminated the flagpole, which eliminates the front yard variance. We've removed, we've moved the cart corral. It eliminates this one-side yard setback variance. The parking lot shade trees have been provided, eliminates that variance. The island terminus now complies. The variance is no longer required. The southerly property line has been landscaped. The buffer variance is no longer required. The light height has been revised to 14 feet. That variance has been eliminated. And we've actually reduced the significance of some of the other variances, and let me just talk about that for a second. By this revision, the side yard setback on the west is now 21 feet rather than 20 feet. The front yard setback is now five feet, four inches instead of three feet, seven inches. The parking stall size, we are now at nine by 36 for the double stacked, as opposed to nine by 38. We will require a variance for nine by 18, a new variance, rather than the nine by 19, and that was in order to comply with the board's, SPRAB's request that we shift the building further eastward. So, we did do that by one foot, and, but they said, "We would prefer that you reduce the size of the parking spaces and give us more room on that west side," which we've done. The parking spaces are now nine by 18. And one facade sign has been removed, therefore, that sign, there's no sign variance required other than for the lettering. The address lettering is supposed to be the same size as the lettering of the sign. We're scratching our heads on that one, but we've increased it to eight inches. Our architect will talk about that and show you what it looks like. One of the recommendations made by SPRAB was the addition of vertical screening on the southwest wall. Can you comment on that?
We believe it's not necessary. We discussed with Kenneth Friedman, the vertical screening on the building can be, it could eat up the wall. It doesn't, it doesn't hold up well, and it's hard to maintain. So, what we came up with is we figured that by putting the trees here...
The 13?
13 trees there. We also have added the additional landscaping here, and with the building, we're sufficiently shading the bulk of this building. As you're driving down the road, you don't have time to say, "Wow, look at this big structure." We believe it's hidden enough.
So, you believe that, in your opinion, as an engineer, driving northbound on 206, that that would be an adequate screen in light of the location of the building to the north of that, and as you're driving down, the addition of the 13 evergreens, that will be more than sufficient screen?
That's correct. The building is 22 feet tall. These trees can grow up to be 20 to 25 feet, so I believe that is adequate.
Have you reviewed the other municipal reports?
Yes, I have.
All right. You and I spent some time going through them, and without wasting a lot of the board's time, I'm going to just tell you that we will comply with everything except, and what I say, it looks like a lot of the reports were consolidations of other reports. Would that be a proper characterization, Mr. West?
Yes.
Okay, so rather than go through all of them, we took, we took Mr. Solow's report and we took your report. And if we could start with Mr. Solow's report, the only thing, in terms of the variances, we've talked about those, which are now new, which are now eliminated. Why don't we start with the parking and circulation? We can comply with all of the requirements of 4.1 and 4.2. We are now providing a bike rack, correct?
That is correct.
In terms of 4.3 and 4.4, 4.5, we need our traffic expert to testify. He's here. 4.6, we can comply with, correct? 5.1, 5.2, we can comply with?
Correct.
Number 5.3, additional shade trees along the property's frontage should be provided and building. The only thing you cannot do is provide building foundation plantings, correct?
That is correct.
Because of the constraints of the site.
That is correct.
And in terms of the 5.4, you've testified about the construction material for the retaining wall, correct?
That is correct.
All right. We will comply with 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 6.1, all the way through 7.1. And in terms of the Environmental Commission's report, can we hold that off for a while because, till the end? Because that report, there are a number of things that we cannot do, some things we can do. We will provide a bike rack. It will not be covered. We can't provide a shower stall for the bike-riding employees, because they don't come by bike. And they wouldn't take a shower anyway. So, it's true. They're not going to take a shower if they ride a bike. We will use Energy Star compliant products. We are, we'll, I'll have our architect talk about green building materials, but putting the environmental report aside for a moment. Shade tree is acceptable, correct?
Correct.
All the site plan advisory, review, SPRAB recommendations, we've complied with, except 10.1D, where it says five parking spaces in the front tier and one space in the second tier of the lot encroached in the front yard setback. That will remain, correct?
That is correct.
E, we cannot comply with the 60-yard setback, but we're doing the best we can. We will have our planner to come in and justify what we've done. We've worked with SPRAB to reduce and move the building as much as we can, correct?
Correct.
All right. In terms of F, we can comply with, we will, we have complied with reducing the 19 by 19 to 19 by 18, correct?
That is correct.
We can comply with 2, 3, and G, all the way through M.
Correct.
Except the vertical landscape treatment, I'm sorry, number 3, we comply with everything else in this, in this report. A lot of what is said in this report is actually regurgitated and repeated in Mr. West's report, so I don't know if I need to go through that report. You tell me.
As long as you comply with all of the comments or the conditions in our report, then you don't have to go through it.
Right.
I think you'll find the items that are bold-faced in the report from Mr. Bridger and Mr. West are mainly the comments.
They're right.
Yeah, we agreed to them.
That's correct.
All comments are acceptable, and all of the surface water drainage comments, acceptable. Driveway connection to public streets, acceptable. What page are you? Nine of 14? Okay, you want to finish going through that?
We didn't want a recharging station. The applicant does not want to comply with that. The applicant should consider installing an electric vehicle charging station. That is no, but all the other ones are fine. J, utility services, we agree with all those. K, disposable waste, it's okay. L, noise is fine. Advertising features is okay. Special features N is okay. O, impacted adjacent properties is a comment. The off-track contribution is acceptable. As far as the additional comments, I addressed pretty much those already. They're already incorporated in my revised set of plans, so those are all acceptable. Other than that, all the other comments are fine.
I'm sorry, that didn't come through as clearly as I needed. So, could you, could you just identify, as Mr. Laird did, the items in bold face in that report, which are not acceptable?
The one that was not acceptable would be on page nine of 14, was comments, "The applicant should consider installing electric vehicle charging station."
Nine of 14.
On onsite parking and circulation.
Charging, comment one is what you were saying?
That's correct. The reason is that the patrons come and go. They're not going to need a charging station, so it's a great idea, and we would do it if, but people come and go, and they're going to be there for a very temporary period of time. We just didn't think it made any sense to put a charging station in.
If they come with enough charge.
That's right.
Okay, so that was, that was a no. We're... Was that the only no in this report?
Yeah, that's the only no I have, yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I have for Mr. Schmidt.
I just wanted to ask about the recycling you have. When you talked about emptying the things in the dumpster station, you said the cardboard would also go. You don't recycle the cardboard?
No, the recyclable is cardboard, it's not, it's not picked up by Mercer. They have their own trucks, so it's cut in squares, it's put it in a container, and they come. It's expected, the trash and the recyclable is picked up three times a week. If more is needed, we'll schedule more, but they generally work with three.
But it's baled, correct?
That is correct.
It's baled, okay. Yes?
Can we go through the engineering and zoning report where the bulk variance and waivers are requested in 3.1, and go through the 16 original ones, and just tell us which ones we should strike? I was getting a little bit confused with the back and forth there.
Sure. I think what I actually thought would be better, Councilman Quinn, would be, what I did is go through Mr. Solow's, the zoning variance is at 3.0, and I just put an X where we no longer need them. If you can just bear with me on that, because I think it just regurgitates the same thing.
Sure, either way.
Right. We...
Yes.
Yes. Page two of Mr. Solow's memo, of Lee Solow's. Is Lee, Lee is a woman, right?
No.
No, I'm sorry. In 3.1, it identifies the variances, and the first one is the front yard setback of 25 feet is required, and the flagpole is 13 feet. That's eliminated.
Okay. Because the flagpole is being moved back beyond the 25 feet.
Correct. The next one, 10B-246, where a side yard of setback 60 feet is required and 20 feet is proposed, we still need that, but it's now 21 feet.
As being proposed.
21 feet is proposed. The cart corral has been removed. That is no longer...
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Cart corral?
It's not removed, but it's no longer a variance.
Right, that's correct.
It's moved, so it's no longer a variance. Are you with me so far?
Yep.
Okay. 10B 246, building height, that is the same. We will have our architect here. That stays the same. 10B 246, parking in the front must be set back 25 feet. We are now at 5 feet, 4 inches. Still a variance. I'm not sure if the next one is a variance, but we only have one loading space. SPRAB said they were fine with one loading space, but if it's a variance, we do need The next one, 9 by 19, the variance is now 9 by 18. We don't comply with the 9 by 19. We are now 9 by 18, but the 9 by 38 double stacked is now 9 by 36.
And there's a variance for the stacked parking period?
Correct.
Since it's not permitted.
The next one, Dave, I believe goes away.
That is correct. We are proposing 23 trees.
The next item, an area equivalent to three parking stalls with parking lots shall be planted with evergreen ground cover and an area equivalent to one parking stall has been planted with evergreen ground cover. That is still a variance?
That is correct.
The next one, a landscape island be placed where there are more than 20 parking spaces in a row and the northerly row has 22 spaces without an island. Still a variance?
Still a variance, but with moving the cart corral, it's now 23 spaces.
Could you address at some point why those can't be made compliant?
Sure. The next one is eliminated about the island terminus.
That has been removed.
The next item, the non-opaque area, it's still technically a variance although SPRAB is okay with that. The street number, we've come up from 6 inches to 8 inches. It's still a variance. The next one does not appear to be a variance, has been eliminated. The next item, about a 5-foot landscape buffer on the south side of the building. We have, we have installed a screen wall there.
That is correct.
That variance is eliminated. Maximum height of the parking lot, that we have come down to 14, that variance is eliminated. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I have nothing further for Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
What I think is a quick question. I know you added vegetation, you said around the bioretention basin, and I'm just curious about, and plus there was a lot of talk of curbing and the curbing throughout and the retention wall, which goes almost all the way around the site, also abuts the bioretention basin. So what is the drainage area for that bioretention basin? Is it taking water, well, just where, what is it?
It's taking the water of the entire site, with the exception of this area in the rear, which is the porous pavement. So we have it all directed from the building. It's all piped. The roof leaders are piped to, the roof leaders are piped to the infiltration trench, which then discharges directly into the stream. It's considered clean.
Discharges into the basin and then it's...
No, it doesn't have to go in the basin. It's considered, it either infiltrates or it goes right to the stream. It's considered clean water.
Okay.
Okay. The dirty water, which is the pavement area, all gets directed to the detention basin. It's then sits there, percolates, and then is discharged to the stream.
Okay.
So the entire site is being treated. We have reductions from 50, 75, and 85 per the DEP requirements. Technically, if we submitted this 10 years ago, we wouldn't have to have any stormwater management because our increase in stormwater runoff would be zero because we're not increasing the impervious surface coverage.
Well, thankfully it's not.
Thankfully. So...
Can you also, there, I may be getting ahead of myself, so if it's not a question for you, I can, somebody else can answer it, but there's a number of places in here where it talks about a reduction in impervious cover on the site. And when I look at aerial photographs of the site, I don't know when they were taken, but there's a lot more vegetation, especially along the south property line. And I'm just curious about where, what's impervious now that will be permeable when you're done?
Well, pretty much we're utilizing, we're doing a redevelopment from DEP. So we're trying to hold the outside perimeter of the gravel, okay? So all this gravel, this whole area was try to situate it in the gravel area. The Taylor rental that was originally here has a curb cut pretty much from the north corner all the way down to where our proposed entrance is. And all this green area that we're proposing right here now, that's all pavement right now. So that is where we're making up the pervous area from where it was originally hard. So basically, it's the entrance, the existing entrance that's completely paved from the edge of pavement to the property's storefront. As if you remember back in the day, you just pulled off anywhere on 206 and you went right into the store.
So you don't anticipate doing a fair amount of tree clearing, tree clearing along the south property line in order to...
We have, the trees that we're clearing are right in this area on our property. They're nine, they're marked on the existing features or the landscape plan is to be, to be removed. But all the vegetation in this area, obviously it's wetlands, is not being removed. The site was surveyed by FISC associates and we located every tree on the site and it's marked and tagged.
Can you explain why you need so much wall? And are you grading to...
Well, the wall is the nature of, is the nature, it's the nature of the new stormwater regs. I mean, you have to, you have to treat this water.
Right.
So you, and you're given a certain elevation, so what you have to do is you set your building height and then you run your pipes and you have to raise it up. So most of the site plans that I'm doing nowadays, to get the groundwater recharged, you gotta have the, you know, it's a 24-inch pipe. And that's what the wall is, it's 3 feet. So you got pipes that are 24, that's why you have to raise it up. And that's what you're seeing most new site plans, which is not really in Princeton as much, but it's in Hillsboro, Montgomery, and other towns where we're doing new site plans, is you have to raise the site up a little bit to meet those new stormwater regulations.
Are you going to do that with grading or are you bringing in Phil to build up that site?
We're going to bring in Phil.
I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions?
So could you explain why you can't provide an island, like after 22 spaces? Is that, am I reading it right? So, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Did you hear that? It was one of the, I guess, variances is for, I guess, getting exemption for the, oh yeah. Landscape island must be placed where there's 20 parking spaces. So why aren't you able to...
Well, right at the cusp. We were at 22, so we were just like, we need the parking. I mean, we obviously could stick a little island in here, but with the extensive landscaping plan that Tim Fox has done for me, I think we were providing a sufficient amount of landscaping. And as far as, is, and this goes to the snow maintenance, when you put those islands in there, it just, it creates a problem to go around. And as I said, the ordinance is 20, we were at 22. The cart corral was there, so we took the cart corral, moved it, and that made it 23 now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
She wants us to reposition the maps if she sees it.
Oh, sure. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Well, it's, it's important that the board be able to see.
If you can't see them, maybe you could move forward. Sit up front. Lots of room.
Mr. Schwartz, can you provide, for what firm do you work?
Okay, the name of the firm is SWS Architects. I am Steven Schwartz.
And, and can you provide the board the benefit of your educational and professional background, please?
Sure. I'm a graduate of Washington University School of Architecture in St. Louis with a Bachelor of Architecture and a Bachelor of Architectural Science. I have been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1970, so that's 47 years ago. And the firm actually opened as soon as I got licensed. So it's been in existence 47 years.
Madam Chair, I'd ask that Mr. Schwartz's qualifications as an architect be accepted by the board?
Yes, we accept them, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz, can you just discuss your experience designing Bottle King liquor stores?
Sure. I've been working with Bottle King for over 30 years. We've done many stores where they're renovated, other stores from the ground up. This happens to be a brand-new store, which will be from the ground up.
And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the floor plans and the elevations that have been presented to this board?
Yes, I did.
All right. What I'd like you to do is just talk to the board a little bit about the interior plan and what this, what this store is going to look like inside.
Okay. Well, first of all, the two boards that you have up here on the easels, this is the rendering of the store.
If we could just have that marked A4.
So the floor plan is A3?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'll mark it on the back, A4.
Oh, it's in black, though.
I'm sorry, what was A3? So A1 was unamended and A3 was amended? Is that how those two differ?
That's correct.
Okay.
A4 is the rendering.
And then to the right of that is a series of drawings, four drawings, which I might say are supplemental to the drawings that you have received. The only change on these drawings, on our architectural drawings, is the elevation only shows one sign now, just the sign on the west side facing the street. So I modified with this supplemental drawing, and I'll show you on drawing number P4, that we have eliminated one of those signs, the one on the north side.
So that would be A5, that's your supplemental? All right, why don't you walk the board through your floor plan, please?
Could we just understand whether A4 is based on A1 or A3?
Well, A4, you can see there is no sign right here, so that sign was removed on this rendering.
But in terms of all the other landscaping...
Everything else is exactly the way it was.
Well, is it as Mr. Schmidt testified to it being amended? Or is this the before?
Well, this, this is, for instance, one of the things I was just looking at, the cart corral, which has now been moved over on the building side, that is not shown on the building side. So this was done more for the building itself.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, it, it does reflect the building, so to speak.
So that's being presented more to demonstrate the building as opposed to...
It demonstrates the building and it demonstrates the monumental sign, which we reduced in height, that we had presented to the, what is it, SPRAB?
Right.
So here, this is now showing you the reduced height, the change in the lettering, and the increased size of the numerals in the address. So all of that is here. But the big thing about that monumental sign is the reduced height and a revised design. I think it's a little more sophisticated now. We, you can see that curved top on it, but I'll get to that in a minute. So what we're trying to, what I'd like to show you here, you see the full building plan, 12,750 square feet. I would like to point out that in the upper, in the northwest corner, right here, part of that 12,750 is an exterior entry area, covered, but it's on the exterior, so that customers do not just walk right out into the rain or, you know, snow, whatever. That's a pretty generous area. It's 15 by 15, so it's 225 square feet. When we start designing a store like this, we have certain elements that the owner tells us are important, and I think you probably know, I mean, of course you know as shoppers what's really important to you. One is convenience of getting into the store, purchasing what you want, and being able to get out quickly. For that reason, one of the criteria that is so important in these stores is that we have sufficient registers. So we actually have the ability to have seven registers here. And during peak times, they would all be going together. The other thing is the fact that in today's environment, things like craft beers have become so important. So customers expect you to have a very large selection. So then, that is a major part of the store, the beer cooler. The beer cooler in this case is this entire element that I'm pointing to right here. Right across from that is the ice freezer. So those are all in a line. That's 68 feet of beer cooler, because the craft beer selection has just mushroomed tremendously and customers expect you to have everything.
Do you have a picture that, that will give the board an idea of how extensive beer, beers have become and how...
Yes.
The number and... We actually, isn't there a New Jersey beer refrigerator as well for New Jersey beers?
I think I'll let Mr. Friedman testify to that.
He mentioned that to me, but...
Yeah, okay.
We could mark this as A5.
You want to do these two together?
Sure.
Okay, that way we minimize.
I'm showing you a smaller copy of what's been marked as A4, and also showing you the beer cooler. This is taken from the Glen Rock store, Glen Rock, New Jersey. It just gives you an idea of how extensive the beer selection is.
I guess that's A6.
I guess that's A6?
A6.
Glen Rock beer?
Glen Rock beers.
Where's the rolling rock?
I'm sorry, it was the Livingston store, not the Glen Rock store. It just gives you a general idea of the size and dimension of the beer wall. I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz.
Not a problem. I think everybody probably has it by now. So this is the beer, what we might call the walk-in beer cooler. Customers do not go in there, but they have access to the total frontage along the beer cooler. And as I said, the extent of craft beers now is mushroomed, where you really have to carry everything, and many people want it refrigerated. So this is one of the important elements that we have to start with, and it's a certain dimension where we try to maximize the number of doors. Behind that is the stockroom. So this entire area, which happens to be on the east side of this building, is the stockroom, and there's an access door here, an overhead door, which Mr. Schmidt has referred to as the receiving area. Right by that door, there is a lift. So we need a lift to take excess stock up to a mezzanine. That's all done mechanically on a lift. And then, of course, there's a stair to get up there. Then you get into the main part of the retail area, into the retail area itself. I'm going to start here in that covered area, and the entrance to the store is right here. It's very important that we conceive of security from the very beginning when the store is designed, so that people who go through the register have to go through a controlled exit. So we're very careful to do that, just so nobody is really walking out the same door they came in. They have to go through the register area and then go out at an exit door. So we separate entry and exit. This is part of the flow of the store, especially when it comes to security. When you enter the store, right here, there is the gourmet food area here. Cheeses and other gourmet foods right at the main entrance there. And then, we have all of the various aisles here. There's shelving, and then there's open stacked space. We also there have to cater to the convenience. Almost every customer will use a push, a basket, just like you would at a supermarket. So these aisles have to be sized well enough so that customers can pass each other, and, you know, we don't have a bottleneck down in the middle of some aisle. So we have cross aisles, we have shelving along the wall, where we need a certain amount of, for instance, display area for liquor. Approximately 80 feet of liquor display all along this wall here. There's a whole beer section of un, of unchilled beers, of just normal beer as it comes in without it being refrigerated. So, all of this being taken into account, and then, of course, there's restrooms and other things. This is probably the smallest store that we have built from the ground up. It is the smallest. But we realize that the site, you know, we're trying to accommodate the site and have a balance between the parking and the building itself. So the 12,750, we feel is appropriate, given all of the measures that happen to be taken into account to make the store successful, which is what everybody wants, and to make it convenient for shoppers.
Let's talk about the height for a second. Of what percentage goes of the height of that, of the structure actually exceeds the 30 feet?
Okay. If you took a perimeter measurement around the, right at the roof line here, around the entire building, you have 485 lineal feet. 85 feet of that is above 30 feet. So it's about 17%. And it happens to be, we actually have it on your drawing, A4. I haven't passed out the supplemental drawings, but it's, the same dimension applies on the drawings that you have. You'll see that we delineated about 42 feet on the north side and 42 feet, you can see where I'm pointing, it's right about there that it goes above 30 feet. It's just this piece here, 42 feet, and here, 42 foot six. It's 42 six and 42 six.
32.
Huh? Doesn't it say 42? Am I wrong there?
32.
Okay. Okay. Here's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's 485 square, 485 lineal feet around the entire building, up at that roof line. Along the street side, if you went from that corner back 42 foot six, I'm not talking about height now. I'm just trying to give you a proportion of the length going around. So it's 42 foot six here, and from that corner, 42 foot six along the north side. That is the only portion that's above 30 feet. That's the only portion. Now, let's look at the exterior of the building for a minute, because I like to think of the building as having a certain simplicity, and yet, a bold design. So for instance, these columns that you see here, they're on fif, it's a 15-foot module. Those are three-foot diameter, poured-in-place concrete columns. We do not finish them with paint or any other material. We just finish those in con, it's just concrete, poured-in-place concrete. So you have that, it gives a very natural appearance when you do that. The rest of the building, and you can look on that, well, maybe we'll pass this out now, if you don't mind. Let's do that.
A7.
There's two reasons for passing out this particular photograph. I wanted you to see the close-up of the detail work on the large wall to the left side of the photograph, of the large blank wall. That's this area right here. So the photograph you're looking at is exactly a duplicate of the rendering that is A, what is that, A4?
A4.
A4. You can see the horizontal lines that are in that panel. Those are grooves that are actually into the wall itself. So they're three-dimensional, and they give a very nice shadow line. If any, if any light hits it, you get this really nice shadow line. And you can also see on that the, the wall sconces that, of course, come on when it started.
And Mr. Schwartz, that's what they'll see on the west side as well, correct?
That is what they will see on the west side as well.
Okay, let's just, if we could, go right to the sign, because, because of timing.
Okay.
I would like to just go right to the time, to the sign. The sign is compliant, other than for the fact that the address number is not the same size as the Bottle King lettering, correct?
That's correct. The letters, the letters are 14 and a half inches tall, and to make the numerals 14 and a half just seems like overkill. What we did do at the SRAB meeting is we agreed to increase it from six inches to eight inches, the numerals.
And the facade sign is compliant, correct?
The facade sign is compliant.
All right, I really have nothing further for the architect, unless the board has any questions?
Yes, Mr. Porter? Could you just explain why the 30 feet is extended for those 42 feet in each direction? In terms of height?
Why we're asking for that height? Okay. I think you can see on the rendering quite clearly that we have a curvature. And you're not looking at an optical illusion here. We actually have a curved coping on the top of that panel. So if it was lower, we would have, it just would not be aesthetically as dramatic as it is here. Now you may ask me, well, why don't you just lower it? There's a reason for that. I want you to see that on the window panels, we've been very careful to make those squares. Geometrically, we're trying to keep it as a pure square. That makes that glazing 17 feet high. The nice thing is, we've done this two other times, so we know how it's turned out in the past. This is a very, it's tried and true. So the glazing is a certain height for a reason. The, that fascia panel is to give the curve a really nice curve to it. And we minimized it as much as we could.
Um, do you, have you looked at the height of buildings on either side and across the street? How does the height of your building compare in overall scale and bulk compare with what's around it?
Well, okay, I have not, I don't know if there's many buildings around, you know, that might, for instance, there may be some two-story buildings, I am actually not familiar with that. But I will tell you that about 83% of this building, about 83% of it, is at 24 feet. So we're really much, much, we're way under the 30-foot limitation for most of it. It's just where...
So you could still have sort of that arch you're looking for and not go up as high as, not exceed the, what's permitted?
Right.
Is that accurate?
It might look more like a mistake than it would like a deliberate aesthetic thing. I think somebody would think, oh, somebody was really off when they, when they drew that line. But this way, it looks like somebody made a definite decision aesthetically.
Any other questions? Anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Friedman? Mr. Friedman, if you would just identify for the board what your position is?
I'm, I'm the Bottle King.
You are Bottle King. Okay. How many years have you been in business?
47 and a half.
You told me 48.
It'll be 48, October 30th.
Okay. And how long have you been in the wholesale business?
Eight years before that.
Okay. And do you have stores at any other locations?
We operate stores, we have 15 stores now. 14 of them are Bottle King, and one is in a King's supermarket as a lease department.
And are there any stores that are located nearby?
Hillsborough and East Windsor.
Do you have a liquor license for this store?
We have one under contract.
All right, and it's strictly a distribution license, correct?
Correct.
And tell us why Bottle King wants to come to Princeton?
It's a good neighborhood. We have one in Chatham, we have one in Ramsey, we have one in Glen Rock. They all surround similar towns, Ridgewood, Short Hills, Summit. And it's just, it fits in well with East Windsor and Hillsborough as far as managing.
Tell us about the proposed store, what's going to be sold?
We'll have a larger-than-usual gourmet section. It'll be complete, we have great people running it. It's all custom-cut, or most of it's custom-cut. It's not prepackaged, it's cut on-site.
Such as cheeses?
Cheeses.
Okay.
Jellies, jams, mustards, breads. We bring bread in every day. Not Silver Cup bread, if any of you remember Silver Cup. It's all good baked bread from New York or good small bakeries. Our, our beer department, the back of the store, the width of the store is determined by the glass doors that we have to display the beers. And earlier testimony spoke about the enormous selection of beers. The craft beer is just growing so fast, and everybody is coming out with line extensions. And you can offer warm beer, but you have to have cold beer. And so we have glass doors, we have 68 feet of glass doors that cover the back of the store from right to left, from north to south. You can't have it going from, on the side wall, because what happens then is your beer box is behind it, and to service it, the beer drivers have to come in with their hand trucks. They're walking down the aisles with customers in there. We want to keep the drivers away from customers, so we limit them to staying in the back of the store, just next to the delivery area. Same thing with the ice, the ice room. We don't want ice being delivered and dripping on the floor where a customer can slip. We've been through these problems before and avoided them. So if you have 68 feet of beer door, and then you have a 10-foot-wide icebox, reach-in icebox, you're now at 78 feet, and then you have seven feet for the hallway that takes you to the back room, you're right up there at 85 feet. That's the reason for the width.
Okay. And how many, what are your hours and days of operation?
Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Sundays, it's 10 to 5, I believe it is. I'm sorry, it's 11 to 5.
Unless it's allowed by ordinance, you, you know, local ordinance, you would go whatever those hours are?
Correct, but we wouldn't say open late on Sundays, nor would we open early.
And how many employees will you have?
Usually it's seven employees, it ranges seven to 12 employees.
And that would be over two shifts?
Yes.
And on your holidays, how would, would your employee count rise?
Yes, it rises.
To about?
Could be 15.
Okay. And you always hire locally, is that correct?
Yes.
Explain to the board why the size of the building is important to you.
Well, the width, I've described. The same for the front end of the building where you have checkouts, you have to have our checkouts. We have seven checkouts, a checkout's four feet wide, you need a two-and-a-half-foot aisle. And then you need box storage for packing out for customers. A lot of customers want a cardboard box with the dividers, you have to keep that up there. It all adds up to 85 feet. As for the depth, a liquor wall takes 80 feet to have the proper display. We have the same situation with alcohol. You have so many craft distillers today. And on the other end, you have, on the other side of the building, you have wine. You just have so many wines, so many regions are now producing wines, that we have to service it, we have to have it for the customers.
So how does the size of this store compare to the others that you have built?
This store is tied for the smallest of what we've built.
Let's talk about deliveries. When are your deliveries made?
Deliveries are usually Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe it is, in the morning.
Between 8:30 and noon?
Yes.
Okay.
It's important to us to get the delivery in and out as fast as possible.
And about how many trucks will you have on those days?
It depends, we could have five, six.
Okay.
It really depends.
And they're all box trucks?
Yes.
When is garbage and recycling picked up?
It's, the garbage is picked up three times a week. Recycling, we bail our own bales, that's picked up once a week.
Okay.
Sometimes twice, again, it depends on, if we need it, we'll pay for an additional pickup.
Okay. And this building will be sprinkled, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As will the landscaping. Yeah. Sprinkled. The landscaping from the ground... The landscaping from the ground up and the building from the roof down. I brought some pictures of the interior of the store that'll show the wide aisles and the selection. These are from the Livingston store, if I can pass them out.
A7, I think it is?
This would be seven.
And A8. And these are a-
I think, I think this was seven.
I'm sorry, these would be, I'm sorry, that would be A8 and A9.
Right.
And would you say that these are a fair depiction of what your store would look like inside?
It would be exact.
Exactly the same?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for Mr. Friedman.
Questions for Mr. Friedman? Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you. My next witness is Scott Kennel. Mr. Kennel, can you provide, tell the board what firm you work for, please?
Yes, I work for McDonough and Ray Associates located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon.
Can you tell us what your educational and professional background and qualifications are?
Yes, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've prepared over 1,000 traffic impact studies. I've testified in over 100 municipalities, including here a couple of years ago, as well as probably 10 other municipalities in Mercer County alone.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennel, did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the traffic impact analysis for this project?
Yes, I did.
And what I'd like you to do is describe the existing conditions and just describe the project generally as it relates to traffic and parking.
Yes, the traffic impact study was submitted, it's dated February 23rd, 2017. And the first phase of that analysis includes an inventory of existing conditions, which included an inventory of traffic conditions along Route 206, based on taking inventory of number of lanes, the speed limits, and land uses in the area. And then through the conduct of manual turn and movement traffic counts at the intersection of Route 206 and Harrington Road. Those counts were conducted on Thursday, December 1st, 2016, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, November 19th, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Just for the board's benefit, we also had conducted additional counts in January of 2017 on a weekday in Saturday just to validate those prior counts. And they were consistent from, the 2017 counts are consistent with the 2016 counts. Generally found that the peak hour during the weekday period is from 4:15 to 5:15 with approximately 1,450 vehicles two-way on 206. I'm sure that's no surprise to anybody, very heavily traveled. And on Saturday, the peak hour occurs from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. With approximately 1,360 vehicles, slightly less than the weekday p.m. Because you don't have the commuter activity at that time. The next step was to determine how much traffic would be generated by the proposed liquor store. And traffic generation rates published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers was consulted. These are data points that are reviewed and accepted by New Jersey Department of Transportation, as well as Mercer County. And it's determined that a store of this size would generate approximately 90 vehicles during the peak hours, whether that's the weekday p.m. or Saturday midday, which are historically the highest time periods that the store would be generating traffic. We took into consideration that there are, that we would have a pass-by credit. In other words, traffic that's already on the roadway, whether it's a work trip or another shopping trip, that would take advantage of an intervening trip to the site and make a multipurpose trip. So we had taken a 30% pass-by credit, which is identified by IT as an accepted practice in the industry. As far as assigning traffic to Route 206 based on the existing traffic volumes, location of population centers, we basically assigned traffic to, 50% to and from the north, 50% to and from the south. The next step was to determine and evaluate future traffic conditions by first taking into consideration the base traffic volumes that were collected and expanded them at a growth rate based on NJDOT historical information. Our firm is also involved with the development just to the north. My partner, John Ray, had testified at a prior hearing for the State Road Plaza. So traffic from that approved development was included in our analysis as well. And then we, the site traffic from the proposed liquor store was surcharged and analyzed the site driveway onto 206. It was determined during peak periods that particularly the left turn movement would be operating at or near capacity, while the right turn movement would operate at better levels of service because it only has to deal with gaps in the northbound direction. And again, my office worked with the site engineer in developing the site access and thought it was beneficial to have a two-lane egress so that people making right turns out of the site would not be delayed further with people who, you know, they wait a little bit longer during the peak periods to make a left turn out of the site. And then the other critical movement we analyzed was the southbound left turn movement. And that was operated at good levels of service, level service B, which is well within the accepted ranges by NJDOT and the industry. As far as the site plan and site access, an NJDOT access, major access permit will be required. NJDOT has classified this section of Route 206 as an access level 5, which means that all movements are permitted to and from the site, that being left turns in and left turns out. And that's how the site plan has been designed. An application has not been filed at NJDOT. We're deferant until after we had presented this application. And then based on any comments the board may have, then we can submit a complete application for their review and my expected approval.
Talk about the number and design of the parking, which really drives this site as to where the parking is and the number of parking spaces.
Yes, as part of this, in our engagement, parking counts were conducted at the East Windsor facility. And we found that during the weekday p.m. and Saturday midday periods, an air conducted within the last month, that the peak parking demand is approximately 30 vehicles. Mr. Friedman has stated to me that this Princeton store is expected to have sales 20% greater than East Windsor. So the, during the non-seasonal periods, the peak demand would be expected about 40 vehicles. However, given the holidays and as many as six days during the year, it's expected that the parking demand will be approximately 70 vehicles. And that's why the site's been designed to not only comply with the ordinance requirement of 73 spaces, but also the anticipated demand during those peak seasonal periods.
One of the big issues is the fact that we've identified all the parking on the one side. And that's, that really goes to the nature of the side yard variance on this, on the west side. And in your opinion, as a traffic consultant, does it make sense? Is it your opinion that because of where the driveway is located, the single-access driveway, that it makes sense to put the parking where it is?
Well, it's a combination also of where the entrance to the building. As was mentioned, testified earlier, this building for customers will have one point of entry for security reasons. And that point of entry is in the northwest corner of the building, which is proximate to the majority of the parking spaces. So the design presented here provides the most convenient means of customers to the entry of the building, reduces the length or makes a more direct connection for shoppers that have carts and the like, rather than having them traverse around the building in more pavement area. So again, the design presented here provides the most convenient access to the entrance to the building. And it's a positive design for pedestrian traffic.
And the loading zone is sufficient and is, and actually was recommended in the report from the Township's Traffic Consultant. They, they did recommend that one loading space would be sufficient. Is that your opinion as well?
That's my opinion in the discussions with Mr. Friedman. And what's also important to recognize, this is a single user for this building. Unlike if you had a building of similar size with multiple tenants, then there may be a need for multiple loading areas. But since this is a single user and it's self-regulated by their staff on-site, it's my opinion that the loading zone presented is acceptable.
And the last question I have for you is the, the reduction to 9x18 parking to allow for some additional room on the west side. Is it your opinion that that is a fairly standard parking stall size, 9x18?
Yes, it is. And it's also important to recognize that all these parking spaces are adjacent to a curb. So in effect, you have an overhang possibility. So in essence, these stalls, even though the paved surface is only 18 feet, it functions as a 20-foot-deep parking stall because of the spaces adjacent to the curb, which allows overhang.
You've had an opportunity to review the traffic report that was generated by IH engineers, have you not?
Yes, I have.
And that was written by Brian Stankis, correct?
Yes.
And you have no problem with any of the comments you've either testified to, supported through your testimony, or can comply with all of the items that are identified in that report, correct?
That's correct. And that also includes additional information relative to site distance. It's my opinion that we have adequate site distance along Route 206 and we can provide the additional information for Brian Stankis' review.
All right, and they really had no issue with the doubling up of the, of those, stacking of those spaces for the employees, correct?
That's correct. I mean, that's, it's going to be, again, for employees only and that can be managed by the manager and the employees on-site.
That's all I have.
Questions for Mr. Kennel? Anyone? No? Professional staff, did you want to ask any questions, comments? No? Mr. Stankis?
Can I, can I just ask, have you, have you at least presented the plan to Major Access? Have you had any discussions short of an application?
No, we haven't. I mean, again, unfamiliar, our office didn't file the access application for State Road Plaza, but I've seen the correspondence. The difference between State Road Plaza and this site is they had a single-lane exit. It's my opinion that a two-lane exit would be more efficient here. And so that's the only thing that deviates from what they approved on State Road Plaza.
Did State Road Plaza have alternative access to Harrington? They did, right?
And it's all, all access to 206.
It's all, I'm sorry, I-
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Stankis, it's very hard for us to hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry.
Could you just-
I, I don't, I don't have anything else unless you'd like me to repeat anything I just said.
The last question that you had is not your last.
I asked a question about whether the State Road, I couldn't remember offhand if the State Road Plaza also had access to Harrington, but I was told it does not.
Is that a project that has been approved and not yet built? I've heard, or is it-
Yes.
And it's on the same side of the road?
It's a, it's a budding of property to the north and it was approved by this board, I'm gonna say three months ago, four months ago?
Oh.
But zoning board? Oh, zoning? Yep, okay.
Oh, oh, right, okay, sorry.
Okay.
That access was on Harrington, not on Route 1.
All, all access is onto 206, there's no alternate access.
Here.
Here, as well as State Road Plaza as well.
Okay, any other questions so far? Anyone?
I have one more witness, Madam Chair, and then I'm complete with my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He has not been sworn, I'm sorry.
You were sworn in in absentia. No. Could you state your name, please?
David Karleback.
And spell it.
K-A-R-L-E-E-A-C-H.
And do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
Mr. Karleback, can you provide the board with your professional and educational background and qualifications, please?
Yes, I have an undergraduate degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I also have a master's degree in city and regional planning, also from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner and I have been for 23 years.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have his qualifications approved as a planner.
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Karleback, what documents did you review in preparation for your planning testimony?
Well, I've reviewed all of the application materials, including the site plan drawings. I've reviewed the municipal zoning ordinance and master plan. I had visited the site and the surrounding areas. And I have an exhibit that I'd like to introduce. I did not personally prepare it. It was prepared by another planner, but I have reviewed it with that planner and I believe it to be accurate and correct.
Okay. A10?
We can mark one as A10, we'll pass the others around.
How do you, how do you identify A10 as-
A10 is a, a series of photographs. It consists of four sheets. The first sheet is a bird's-eye view or an aerial view of the site and some of the surrounding area. And then Sheets 2 and 3 are ground photos of the subject property. And the final page, Sheet 4, are ground photos of some of the surrounding land uses. So it looks like everybody has it in front of them. I'll just introduce the site. This is one tax lot. It's 1.86 acres. It's developed with an older building and it has a compacted gravel parking area. You can see the subject property is outlined in yellow on this site. And the remarkable feature is, of course, that it's surrounded on all sides by other commercial uses. You see, there's a recently approved project to the north on a site that's shown as a commercial and it's barren right now. Directly across the street is the STS Auto Repair Center. There's another series of small buildings to the south, which are all commercial uses. And then the nearest residential uses to the east are well-buffered by the existing vegetation in the area. And I'm not going to go through every single photograph, but I think if you look at Pages 2 and 3, it really speaks to the issue of this site and how it's an older obsolete building. The site is in need of redevelopment. The current usage of the property is just to store vehicles. And then finally, the last sheet shows, on the upper two photographs, the Mavis Auto Repair Center in both winter and summer views. And then it shows some of the other land uses in the area, which includes a contractor's yard to the north and commercial office buildings abutting to the south. Now, this property is located in the S2 Service 2 District, so the use is permitted in this zone. The planner has listed all of the variances in his review memorandum to the board. There was a total of 15 variances at the time, and I think we've whittled that way down at this point to make this the best application possible. I believe that all of the variances sought are justifiable under the C2 section of land use law, which is different. In other words, the applicant doesn't have to prove any hardship. It's more of a benefits versus burdens test. The applicant must prove that the application advances the purposes of the municipal land use law and then satisfies both prongs of the negative criteria. No substantial detriment to the public goo, good, and no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. to the public good and no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And then finally, the board is to conduct a balancing test to see whether those public benefits that are derived from this application outweigh any detriment. And when applying that balancing test, the board need not only consider the benefits that arise from the variances that are sought, but you look at the application as a whole and all of the benefits that are conferred by this application. In terms of the project positives, there are many public benefits. This project will activate an unutilized commercial piece of property. The current condition of the property is not congruous with the zoning scheme for the area. The project will remove what I consider to be an unattractive void in the streetscape. The new development will improve the aesthetic of a visually prominent location. And the project will continue the positive transformation of this corridor. It's consistent with the pending redevelopment of the property immediately abutting to the north and the reimaging and rebranding of the STS Auto Repair Center. The site is well-suited for the use by virtue of its condition. It's, for the most part, cleared land. It's flat. The lot area is two times the lot area requirement in the zone. It's ideally suited for this use. It's also suitable by virtue of its context. It's on a main thoroughfare. It has excellent roadway connectivity, excellent visibility, access, and it is in a commercial setting. This project will promote public safety. You heard prior expert testimony that the overall layout will function safely and securely. And expert testimony also revealed that the site will function conveniently and efficiently. This project promotes the state plan. The state plan is the cornerstone of planning in New Jersey, and this is a targeted growth area. This particular section is in a PA 2 district under the state plan, which is a suburban growth zone. The project promotes the master plan. The master plan goals of economic development and improving business are advanced by this proposal. And the project promotes the master plan goals to improve the visual quality of the The project promotes several important purposes of the municipal land use law. I'll just review them briefly. Paragraph G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And as I said, this is a permitted use. It's an appropriate location. It's compatible with the zone scheme, and it's also compatible with the existing land uses in the area. Purpose I of land use law is to promote a desirable visual environment. And what this project accomplishes is it removes an old, outdated structure. It replaces it with a new building with modern architectural treatments, new lighting, new landscaping, new durable paving, signage, all of which will have an immediate impact on beautifying this site and better integrating it with its surroundings. Purpose M of the land use law is to encourage activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of lands. And here we have redevelopment of a property which is already served by existing infrastructure, existing access. It's a very efficient operation, and also advances the state planning goal in that regard. In terms of project negatives, none of the variances will substantially damage the public good or the intent of the zone. In terms of the front yard setback, that related to the flagpole only, and that flagpole has now been relocated, so we've eliminated that front yard setback variance. In terms of the side yard setback, the setback, that 20-foot setback on the south side is consistent with what exists at the site today. And although it may not be abundantly clear in the first photograph, you can see that that building is situated very close to that side lot line. The side yard setback is a longstanding condition that has existed at this property without detriment. And the relief only relates to the positioning of the building, not the size of the building. In fact, this building is less than half the size that the zoning would permit. The FAR requirement is 35 percent, and this building is actually right around 16 percent. So it can't be said that the building is too large for the site. In fact, there are no variances for lot coverage or building coverage. And there is a practical difficulty here, because the minimum lot width requirement in the zone is 100 feet, and the minimum side yard setback is 60 feet. So let's think about this. If you apply 60-foot side yard setbacks to 100-foot-wide lot, there is no building envelope. It doesn't exist. So there is a disconnect here with the ordinance requirement. I'm sure at some point that will be revisited. The building positioning strikes an effective balance of safe circulation and adequate light and air. It allows for more efficient side-by-side, double-loaded parking and the whole. I don't think I need the microphone.
Yes, you do. You have to be recorded.
The entrance plaza is located right here, and you can see the idea is to focus or concentrate the parking in the area of the entrance plaza. It just wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't be logical to put parking on the other side of the building and have patrons walk halfway around the building to access that entrance plaza. So this is the most efficient, the most logical location for parking. And what it does, of course, is it pushes the building further to the south, closer to this side lot line. The planning purpose of adequate light, air, and open space is met by the mitigating landscaping measures, which blends this building with its surroundings. And the deviation is further mitigated by the very nature of the adjacent use, which is commercial and not residential. So the essence of setbacks is for the benefit of the adjacent property users. And in this case, the adjacent commercial use has had this very similar setback in existence for several years. The one-side yard setback of 29.2 feet has been eliminated. That was for the cart corral, and that has been relocated. In terms of the building height, 32 feet proposed versus 30 feet is permitted. I think we've heard extensive testimony in that regard. It seems to me that the majority of the building is compliant. In fact, much of the building is only 24 feet in height. And the architect explained that the reason for this minor deviation, this two-foot deviation, is just to add greater visual interest to the building. So certainly, this small relaxation of that standard, I think, would give the board a much better product. In terms of the front yard parking setback, 5.4 feet is proposed where 25 feet is required. And that only relates to a small number of spaces at the front of the property. I believe it's five spaces that are actually impacted. Of course, the benefit that's conferred is the fact that you have more parking closer to the entrance plaza of the building. And that's the focus, again, is to try and get as many parking spaces nearby the entry. So it's consistent with the general pattern of development in the area. If you look at the property directly to the north, it's not built yet, but it is approved. It doesn't have parking per se in the front yard, but it does have a parking aisle in the front yard. So this is actually just a mirror image of what was already approved. Instead of having the aisle in the front yard, it has the actual stalls in the front yard. Very similar design. And again, the front landscaping mitigates or minimizes any impact caused by that deviation. Almost all of the parking is in the side or the rear of the property. In terms of the parking stall size, I think we already heard from the traffic expert, and I'll just iterate his comments, that nine-foot by 18-foot spaces are adequate considering that there is an overhang available. Let's see. I think there was a variance originally for the number of trees in the parking lot, and the applicant has agreed to comply with that. There were other variances related to parking lot plantings, and I believe we comply with that now as well. Parking lot islands, that is still a variance, but that's a slight variance. It's, you're supposed to have a landscaped island every 20 parking spaces. And here, there's a 22 consecutive spaces with no planted island. But the Site Plan Review Committee did accept that deviation. The parking lot landscape island terminus, that variance has been eliminated as well. We're going to comply with that. The lighting of signs, non-opaque yellow versus white, that, again, that's a very minor deviation, and the Site Plan Review Committee was okay with that. The sign street number has been increased in size, and it's found to be adequate now. I think it's still a minor deviation, but it has been increased in size. The number of signs per lot, we heard, yeah, we heard prior, I guess, the attorney at the outset explained that that's not really a variance, that the board has the discretion to allow two facade-mounted signs instead of one facade sign and one freestanding sign. So that's not a variance. Buffer width, we're going to comply with the buffer width. And the lighting height, we're going to comply with that as well. So you can see, a lot of work has been done to pare down the number of variances. All the statutory tests for the granting and the relief are met. Primarily, the variances that are remaining relate to the building positioning and the height of the building. So for all the reasons I stated previously, I think that the building positioning is a better zoning alternative for the property, and I believe that approval of all of these C variances that we spoke of are warranted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions?
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
The five parking spaces to which you referred that are in front of the building, are they designated for any special use, or are they just five parking spaces?
Six.
Or whatever the number.
It may show six. I think only five are actually within the, if my calculation is correct, I think five out of the six are within the front yard setback. And the one that's furthest away is actually greater than 25 feet. I may be wrong. It may be six, but it's close. No, they're not designated for any specific purpose. They're just, you know, part of the parking scheme. And these are the spaces right here.
Any further questions? Anyone? Louise?
I'm wondering, Quinn, I was expecting somebody to address the concerns that the Environmental Commission expressed, and those were dismissed a couple of hours ago out of hand. And I'd like to revisit those because I, well, I'd like to understand your responses to those and also to the comments of the chair of SCRAB, who expressed similar reservations about the overall size of the, and intensity of the use.
I was at that SCRAB meeting, and there was an interplay between the board members and the applicant about what we could do to mitigate that side yard variance. And we've done what they suggested, which was to come down to nine by 18 spaces, shift the building now to 21 feet as opposed to 20 feet, give you the landscaping you need, give you those large evergreens to screen it, that wall as you're coming northbound. So the, some of the comments by the Environmental Commission were basically deny all the variances. So that's why we were surprised by that comment. It was not so much that they had bad ideas, it's just, we didn't like the site, you should deny all the variances. And we just didn't think that that was necessarily appropriate for the site that we spent quite a bit of time designing and well-thought-out through our traffic and our architect and our engineer.
I guess I chime in because I'm the liaison to the, am I allowed?
Mr. Quinn.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I welcome Mr. Texarni's comments on behalf of the Environmental Commission, since he's... I have one question about the PEC report specifically. Under general recommendations, it requests an updated NJDEP letter of interpretation and NJDEP flood hazard area verification should be provided before site plan approval.
That will be, that's, we can comply. We will comply with that.
Okay. Lieutenant, go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess I should explain, further elaborate. I think that our reaction was in response to the original site plan. And based off of your testimony, it seems like a lot has changed since that original site plan. I think that certain things still haven't been addressed, which, you know, I can understand maybe not, you know, having an electric charging station, you know, I get people coming in and out. But I would still like to hear a little bit more about green building initiatives, solar potentially. You know, those types of things, we still would like to see. Also, I think that in general, the PEC felt that this site, or this building and the proposal was beyond the capacity of the site. You know, we at the PEC are really big right now on stormwater. We feel like stormwater is a major issue in town. And while this might not be adding impervious surface, we still feel like, you know, if we're going to be granting variances to increase the size of parking, we should have proper stormwater management. And I see that, you know, you've made efforts to have bio-retention and pervious, you know, asphalt, but we still wanted to see more. I think that we would like to see the whole parking surface become pervious, I mean, impervious. And so, and further initiatives wherever possible. I don't know if it's possible to expand the bio-retention area. I think that it kind of extends, and then there's the brook or the stream, so I don't know if it's possible to expand that. But I think that that's one thing that could potentially be done. I'm still not crazy about the double parking at the end that goes into the buffer. I think that those spaces, you know, could be reduced. So I think those are just some of my thoughts. So if those types of things could be addressed, that would be great.
I might just call up my architect for a second to talk about building materials, because maybe that would help you. Mr. Schwartz, there was a question by a board member about building materials and whether we can avoid certain materials and we can use energy-efficient systems. And could you, maybe you address that in your experience?
Okay. Actually, I can address it specifically to this building, not just general experience. We do try to do things that minimize the type of finishes that we have to put on materials. For instance, I mentioned that all of the columns, the freestanding columns, are all poured-in-place concrete with no finish on them, all just the natural concrete finish. The fascia panel, which is metal, is a natural color, but it's only galvanized. So we actually wanted to feel more like an organic structure, and that's why the galvanized metal, the natural concrete columns, and even the solid wall panels, which are masonry, are, it's one of the most energy-efficient things that we have found, because it's a sandwich panel with insulation in between the hard surfaces. So inside, we do not put, we just paint the inside of the wall, and the same on the exterior. So there's minimal excess finishes. The other thing is that on the floor, it is a natural concrete floor. There are no, there's no vinyl surface, no wood surface. It's just polished concrete. And then, of course, you have the glass and aluminum storefront, which we think is well-designed. It has nice proportions. It's full height, 17 feet high, so that we get a lot of natural light into the store as much as possible. We do have to be very careful in a store like this not to have an excess amount of sunlight, because it can actually destroy the wine. So we have So we have it only up by the cashiers. So that, we have to find this fine balance between doing things which might minimize, let's say, energy use, but maximize the, the maintenance of the product itself.
Do you know if the appliances themselves are Energy Star rated?
Absolutely. We are now going through all 15 stores with a program in New Jersey. Of course, we don't have to do it here because we're going to use all of the highest energy efficient equipment that we can buy. But we are converting every single store to the highest energy efficient HVAC rooftop units, refrigeration and so forth. I'm not saying we're just doing two or three. All 15 stores are being addressed. Now, the three newest ones are all up to the, the highest standards now. But then we have the other, the other 13, which, you know, are being upgraded.
Have you guys looked into installing solar panels on the roof?
We are. We're investigating that now. We have several meetings coming up in the near future. That also requires a balance. So we've, we've actually gotten proposals for solar, but we're not at the point of telling you that it's definite. If it works, it's going to happen. So because it's a new building, I can actually upgrade the structure to hold the solar panels because you need about five pounds per square foot to add to the roof load. It's very hard to do on existing buildings because many of them are designed right at the minimum. But here, if it happens, we will be able to include that. I just can't give you that answer right at this moment, but we're trying.
You mentioned that you've been speaking.
We have been.
A bit to solar.
In the last few weeks, we're getting proposals. We, and we have more upcoming meetings.
If, if it works, you will do it.
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Friedman wanted to address that as well.
Oh, great, thanks.
I got an email this morning. Tomorrow, we have an appointment. See, the problem with solar for us is that because we have refrigeration compressors, ice compressors for the ice room, and the HVAC compressors on the roof, the availability of space for solar panels is limited, what with the shadow that these compressors throw off, plus the mansard. The way to get them off the roof is to put them on the ground. You don't want it, we don't want it. But there's another way, and that's with geothermal. We're meeting with geothermal people tomorrow. They're coming from New York and another group is coming from another part of Jersey. And if it, if we can do it, we're going to put geothermal in. If we put geothermal in, then we'll put solar in. But we, it's too early for us to make the commitment right now. We didn't know whether, you know, whether this was going to go forward or not. But it's in our, it's in our best interest to do it if we can.
Great, thank you. Would your engineer also be able to testify in terms of stormwater management and potential, other potential expansions of bio retention or stormwater management? And also, in terms of the pervious pavement, why, why you guys didn't choose to do the whole tear parking area?
Well, the porous pavement doesn't really hold up in commercial property that well, so that's why we only kept it to the areas that is going to be limited use. High traffic movement for porous pavement is going to break up. And that's our experience of seeing it. I believe the adjacent site has some, but if you have your aisleways as porous pavement, it's going to break up. It has voids in it, so it doesn't hold up well, so we didn't propose the porous pavement. The project is going to be reviewed by the DNR Canal Commission, it's going to be reviewed by the New Jersey State NJDEP. And they have a strong regiment of, of rules and regulations which we are going to abide to. We designed the, the stormwater management to meet their regulations and we designed it to meet the Princeton regulations to make it bigger. It doesn't always say it makes it better. You want to control the runoff that what comes in, you don't want to oversize it. It doesn't help your situation. These basins that we are putting on here are very expensive. These infiltration basins have the sand and the media that has to be constantly cleaned, maintained and, and made sure that they work properly. And occasionally, you're going to have to excavate this media as well. So if you get a basin too big, you're going to have a cost, a project of always maintaining these basins because it's too big. And what are you actually gaining by reducing more runoff? I mean, is, is, what's the purpose of that? We are, we're designing to reduce the two-year storm by 50%, and that's the huge storm that happens all the time. You also have the, the other storms, we're reducing the 100-year by, by 85%. So the storms are being reduced per the state standards. This isn't a large area, so it's not like it's, you know, reducing much is going to help flooding somewhere else. I mean, you know, you want to control the runoff, the rate of runoff coming off your property, you want to keep it consistent of what it's going now. Currently, this property, which is impervious gravel, this gravel has been there for 30 years, is hard surface. It doesn't, I mean, though you say gravel, water goes through it, there's no water really going through this existing parking lot. It's been there forever. So right now, you have existing site with cars on it, which cars aren't, these cars are new, so they're not really contaminants, but you have runoff and you have non-points going right to the stream. Right now, and with this proposal, we are meeting all the new stormwater regs to the T. We are providing, right where the edge of the stone is, I'm holding that edge as best as possible, I'm putting a retaining wall, and I'm keeping that vegetation completely intact. All the dirty water that used to go there is basically going into my retention basin, my bio retention area. This property is about the only property adjacent to us has a pipe and the other property has a pipe. We are maintaining a nice repairing buffer, which the other properties do not have. If you've been to the site, it's wooded, it has a nice feel to it. So I don't see the need to over-design a detention basin for, for an acre and a half of runoff. I think what we propose meets the state standards, is going to meet the Canal Commission, which are very difficult people with their, their regulations, and we'll meet their regulations to the T. So I, I feel strongly that what we have for stormwater management is, is effective and will be approved. And as far as the porous pavement, I'm not bought into it, other than residential driveways and then parking areas on the side. But this site is a site where cars are coming in and out, and I just believe it's just going to break up.
Okay. All right. I think I'd like to.
Louise, did you have something to say? Sorry, interrupt.
No, I want, I want a meeting to the public. We've had people sitting here all evening, so, and then we'll get back to board discussion. So let me open for the public. If you want to speak, come forward to the microphone, give your name, be sworn in, you have about three, four minutes, each one of you. Come on. Would you state your name and address, please?
Dally Baffoy, 23 Hillside Avenue.
You know, we can't hear you at all. Maybe you can adjust it.
Dally Baffoy, 23 Hillside Avenue. Please excuse me, I'm really nervous.
And I'm going to ask you if, to the extent you're providing testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I have more questions and comments than testimony. I don't really have anything to testify for. It's the first time I'm hearing about this thing. I live right next door to STS. I want to ask all of you, how would you feel if you one day woke up and found your house in the neighborhood, in the immediate vicinity of a liquor store? You have kids, you have family, you have neighbors, you have, you know, what you thought was a home, all of a sudden, it's the neighborhood of a liquor store where people go in and go out and stay out and drink their wine and drink their liquor and, and have parties. And it is not this kind of a supermarket where you go in, you buy, you move. No. This is going to be open until 10 o'clock in the evening. You're going to have young people sitting in the parking lot and God knows how many cars are going to be parked there. I'm hearing numbers that I'm just like, I don't, don't even know, I don't know how to process all the information that I'm hearing here. Just put yourself in that position. And I know it's not your fault that I bought a house outside of the main store in Princeton. I lost my initial house in the middle of Princeton to alcohol. I was married to an alcoholic. Now I'm going to lose my house because I won't be able to sell it because I'm living right next to a liquor store. So all this wonderful design, and my daughter is an architect, and she probably would have designed something even nicer. But this doesn't mean anything because it's what's going to be inside. And you're turning a place that used to be a neighborhood, okay, not the fanciest neighborhood in Princeton, still a neighborhood, now it's going to be the liquor store area. I don't know how many of you realize what the parking lot means in terms of people coming to the store, staying and having parties late at night. The police never comes here. I had a break-in into my house all of a sudden, a few months ago. It took the police half an hour to, to arrive. The police doesn't really care about this neighborhood. And you're going to put a liquor store here. Who is going to control what's going to happen? And all these people are very professional, they're experts, I heard all the testimonies, really impressive. But it's a liquor store. And it's in Princeton. Maybe the end of Princeton, but still in Princeton. People buy houses here to have their kids go to Princeton schools. And that's the only reason I stayed in Princeton. And I'm living near a liquor store. I just would like all of you to put yourself in this situation. And I'll be moving one day and other people will be, may, probably not buy my house because my house has lost all its value as soon as the liquor store is there. But who else is going to move into this neighborhood? This is not just CVS. It's not just, whatever it is, I don't know. We have some, there are some shops there, I never go there, but there are shops where you can buy food. It's not the same. They're all closed between 5 to 7. You're going to have this open until 10 o'clock at night? How, who is going to control the noise? I can hear anything from, you know, and the lights at night. I don't know what the plans are. I'm hearing lights until 11 o'clock. That shines right into my house and other houses. I can only speak for myself. I mean, this is not a regular store, you know, a five, a 9 to 5 or something like that. So I know, I'm sorry, I'm so upset, but I'm really upset. I'm sick to my stomach. And I would like all of you to put yourself in my place. And I do have a comment about the traffic. I don't know what it was talking about. But when you come here, when you try to go home around 5 o'clock, you're done. In the morning, when you try to come in, I mean, the traffic that, you know, all these statistics don't really make sense when you translate it into real life. So there is the statistics, there is also the reality. And those don't always go hand in hand. Is there any regulation in Princeton about noise level?
Yes, there are, there are regulations about.
And how are, how is anybody going to enforce those regulations?
Well.
And also in terms of, of the rules about people gathering in parking lots and staying there, and who is going to enforce it? Are you going to have a policeman there all day? You're going to have a security person dispersing all the people who are staying in the parking lot?
Right. I think you, you have a lot of points and, you know, I allotted you a little extra time. A lot of these things depend upon citizen complaint. You have to call the police and complain, you have to call the engineering office about the noise level and so on. They can't be there. You're the one, unfortunately, who are there, who can make the complaint.
I had a break-in into my house. I came into my house, I saw somebody was there, I called 911. The lady told me to leave my house because maybe the person is still there. It took half an hour. She's thinking maybe somebody is there and it takes half an hour to come over and you're telling me to call the police? What's the point? So, so when you are thinking in terms of approving something, you also need to think in terms of the ramification. It's not good enough to just say, well, it's up to you people to pick up the phone and call. The reality is a little bit different from the book.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
I think you've made your point.
Charles Kreider, I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
I'll make some observations and some comments and the rest is up to you. Well, my first observation is, this is a monstrosity. If you look at the plan, almost every square inch that's not wetlands is covered. Now, the ordinance doesn't prohibit that. Heard the testimony, it sounds like this is a one-story building and the height is 24 feet. That's about 24 feet to the ceiling here. The planner testified that, oh, we're nowhere near the allowed floor area ratio. Well, I don't think anyone who's ever done floor area ratio has considered a 24-foot one-story. An industrial building is 12 feet. Well, it's clear that Mr. Friedman understands his business very well. Everything's carefully meshed together, he's thought about it. But the bottom line is, he, if he needs, it sounds like he needs this space, he had, no justification has been given for the height. But the bottom line is, this whole proposal is too big for the lot. Period. There's no way around it. So let's look at what we're doing here. This is the gateway to Princeton, the northern gateway, the only one. And so we're going to put in a use that generates traffic at the peak hours and slows it down. I skimmed the traffic report, there's some F levels of service there because of the left-hand turns. Now, I've had my little business up there since 1980 and I have gardens outside and I can see exactly what goes on on 206. And it's going to be stoppered. So, think about what else is up there. Right now, there is no other business in the service zone that comes close to generating this level of traffic. The only thing, the next base, the next thing is CVS TD Bank, except half their traffic goes out on Princeton Avenue and you don't have the left turn problem. Nothing is close in terms of traffic. Now, the problem is, it's not the applicant's fault. You set the regulations, this board and previous boards, you set the regulations, you set the vision, and the vision apparently didn't realize that we're going to have strip malls at the entrance to Princeton. Except, there's one key difference. Strip malls usually only have one entrance and the traffic moves the long way in front of the stores. Now we have, each group of stores has their own entrance. Is this in the public benefit? The test, the planner testified, oh, this fixing up this old building is going to be in the public benefit. Well, how many liquor stores do we already have? We have plenty. The land use law requires space to be provided for a variety of uses. Unfortunately, the service zone is the only zone in town for years that has allowed a variety of uses. And guess what? All the retail and the office buildings have squeezed out that variety of uses. There hasn't been any new service use put in since I came there in 1980 and before that. I just don't have all the history. So, what can I say? 32 feet at the front. So a 24-foot one-story building with 32 feet at the front. This is taller than Ben Yedlin's two-story clock building. I mean, it's just out of proportion. got to do, I don't know what you can do. I'm sorry to see it. Well, you made the regulations, you set the vision, or lack thereof, and whatever you got to do, I don't know what you can do. I'm sorry to see it. I think it will be a detriment to the neighborhood. But the land use law is a land use law.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Cohen. I just have a couple of, really, questions that were in the reports.
You've just, this is really not as appropriate to make comments having stepped down.
Okay. I'm really not making a comment, I'm trying to point out three questions that were in professional reports that did not get addressed.
I think we, I think it's going to impact on the record.
Okay.
We really shouldn't proceed that way.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, let me close the public portion of the meeting. And, board members, do you have any further questions or comments? Anyone? Louise?
Yes. It was suggested that in order to comply with the front yard setback, the applicant could lose the, or bank the parking spaces in front. And I don't know whether the comment went on to say, but if that were the case, it might be possible to move some of that paved area in the back out of the wetland buffer. And I wonder what your thoughts are about that, at least on a plan that I see, the wetland buffer intrudes into the paved area, the parking stalls in the very back. I'm looking to comply with, or at least the spirit of the setback, and shrink the footprint some. And I also want to ask a question related to traffic after this. The traffic, excuse me, the parking spaces in front of the building, six spaces, I guess five of which are within the setback.
Uh, yes, five, right, the five.
If those go away, you can come closer to complying with the front yard setback. Would that also allow you to shift the building enough to come out of the wetland buffer area behind?
Well, the building's in the wetland buffer, you're talking about the parking?
Parking area, not the building, the parking area and the retaining wall and, you know, those areas that you were, that are in the hatched area you were just touching, that's identified on the plan as wetland buffer zone.
Right, that's the reason why it's hatched, it's gravel currently right now. So that's, that's why it's hatched. So we can't move the building forward and eliminate that. And basically what I'm doing with the extending is, I am utilizing as much existing gravel that there is. I'm not really trying to disturb the buffer area, I'm just utilizing what was there and holding that edge.
What was there is in the buffer area, so...
But it's not, yeah, but it's...
Hoping that we can pull out of the buffer area.
Dave, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not in the wetland's buffer area.
To reduce the impact on that riparian zone.
Well, it, well, it's in the buffer area, and I can't move, shift the building forward, then I'm going to be in a front yard setback issue. I mean, I won't have the circulation that is required, I'm not, I'm going to be pulling this aisle away that's then going to go into the right away. So if you shift everything, you got to shift the front of the, of the building in. So that's a, we're not gaining anything there. I mean, you're getting this stuff out of the wetland area, but we're coming up with a design that's pushing more closer to the front of the building. Again, I think the wetland buffer that I'm using is stone, so what we're doing is, we're putting a retaining wall, and it's going to go straight down, and it's going to be vegetation. And to me, I think it's a better design. Right now, you have dirty water coming to the stream, and what we're proposing is to redirect it in Princeton.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that redirecting it away from the stream is a bad thing. I'm saying that if you have less of an impact on the riparian area in the stream corridor, that would be a good thing. And if you don't pave it, you'd have less...
Well, what's the purpose of the buffer? The buffer is to purify the water before it gets to the stream, is that correct? That's what the buffer is all about, and it's also to protect the wetlands. What we're doing is, you have, you have wetlands, and then you have a stream, and you have, what is it, a 25-foot riparian zone, which you can't touch, and then you have another 25 feet. So we're providing, you know, the vegetated that's there, we're providing, maintaining it. So by gaining additional riparian buffer, what are you going to get? You're not purifying the water anymore because the water is now going to the detention basin. So I don't see the benefit by giving a better, bigger buffer, because the buffer, which is supposed to purify the water, the water is no longer going.
Well, there are multiple benefits to buffer areas. I don't think it makes sense to debate things like air quality and habitat and heat island effect and carbon sequestration, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm, you know, I guess we're beating this today. So, so your testimony is that there's just no shrinking the footprint, there's no, there's no lowering the intensity, and maybe this is a planning question, you know, or, you know, not necessarily an engineering question, I'm just trying to get at 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound sack question.
Okay.
And I know that's, I'm leaving the stormwater thing and the wetland buffer thing behind, sort of shifting the focus to the overall footprint and intensity. So...
Okay.
All right. The first part of the question had to do with banking the parking in the front, and I'm not sure that's been responded to.
Uh, yeah, no, that question has not been addressed. I don't know whether that's for the traffic guy, or the planner, or the bottle king himself.
I think the question is whether...
Seems like your own testimony was that there weren't that, weren't, there were more parking spaces than were needed normally. And I drive that section of 206, as I know we all do, traffic there and turning movements both are, you know, on the very high end of the road rage scale, so...
I understand. I mean, the traffic conditions are not ideal on that section. But as far as the parking, and I testified earlier, that, first of all, the ordinance requires 73 spaces, or shown 75. In addition, given their extensive experience with operating liquor stores, Mr. Friedman is very well aware of what the needs are and wanted to be able to provide a parking supply that can accommodate the peak parking periods, so you don't have situations where vehicles cannot get in and out of the site, or they're trying to park other locations. He knows his business with his 40-plus years' experience, and it's somewhat consistent with what the ordinance requires, that the 73 spaces were shown 75. And I think it's appropriate and proper planning to be able to accommodate the anticipated demand, albeit it's maybe six days out of the year, but it's still appropriate to account for it.
Anyone else? Any further comments?
That that could be banked and not granted, not need a variance, and only if you had a parking problem in the future on those six days would those be installed? I mean, there's always the issue of whether you provide parking for the very peak.
Who would make the determination about whether they can be installed?
Well, I guess if the, I guess the way the ordinance reads, if it were determined there was a problem...
And who makes that determination?
I guess the owner first, and presents that to the engineering staff to determine whether and when bank parking needs to be put in. But there is an argument here about, you know, peak, you know, it's, whether you, for the, the church has a parking lot sized for Christmas.
Does the church have one of those little parks?
Often.
The problem is, there's no off-site parking, and there will definitely be a crowded parking lot on the peak periods. And the only off-site parking is on the highway, and that's not going to work. It's, it's just prime, it's just prime parking. A lot of our customers are, a lot of them are not kids. I mean, everybody's a kid to me, but I mean, they're not, they're not 25-year-olds. A lot of them are middle-aged and senior citizens. And the five spaces in the front, or the six, whatever they are, is prime parking. And we're going to put hedges in to block it.
Anyone else? Did you have something else?
I, I mean, I think that, you know, I would disagree with, you know, the buffer only being used for, you know, purifying water. I think that there's many other benefits to the buffer, and I think that, you know, that double-stack parking probably shouldn't be there. I think that, you know, any more space that we can provide for the buffer, the better. So that's one variance I would still deny. I mean, the other ones, for the most part, you know, are just details, minor details, but...
If I could address that one point about the double-stack parking, that, that's going to be so rarely used. It's a real pain in the neck to have it, because you've got to take three people out of the store to move their cars so another three can get out. So it's not going to be used except on the extreme, most extreme periods.
Right, but if it's not going to be used, you might as well, you know, reduce that parking space and put it to natural land.
I can remove it if you want it, it just, it, to me, and I will remove it if you want it, but to me, it doesn't make sense. It's there for the worst, and...
Yeah, I understand the benefits of having it, but I think that having more natural land, because, you know, if you think about it, that's, what, five spaces times, you know...
We'll remove it.
All right, good.
So is that in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that in the buffer area?
So, those stacked parking spaces were in the buffer area, just for clarification? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
And if you remove the stacked parking, you're not impinging on the buffer area? Just for clarification.
They're still infringing on it just a little.
And it's a lot, we're infringing on it, but not as much, we're returning a lot of the buffer back.
I mean, I appreciate that, and I think that that's definitely a concern, although I feel like it would ideally be returned completely, but still, I guess I would take whatever I can get.
Okay. Any, anything else, Mr. Quinn?
I would, I know that it's outside of the purview of this application, but comments were made about the, about drinking in the parking lot, and since this is the, probably the owner's introduction, and might be the only time that we have the king with us, I wonder if someone on his team could address this notion that this is, that parties and tailgating go on in the parking lot of liquor stores.
Mr. Friedman, you and I have spoken quite a bit. You take great pride in your stores, and why don't you talk about how you maintain?
Okay, we, first of all, we limit what we sell. We don't sell many half-pints and pints. Usually, those are for people that want to cook with them. We just don't encourage it because the people that buy the half-pints, the pocket size, the people that would drink in a parking lot scare the good customers away. I don't make any money selling $2 wine. I mean, that's what it's all about. We don't want those people in our parking lots. They do not, in all 15 stores, I can tell you, we have never, ever, in 48 years, had a complaint, informal or formal, against us for people loitering in the lots. We don't allow it, but they just don't, they just don't do it. We don't have a consumption license, we have a distribution license, which doesn't allow for drinking. So it's, it's a total non-issue, just doesn't happen. Never has.
Thank you.
I asked before about those five or six designated parking in front, and you said they were not designated for anything. Where in fact do you plan to put handicap parking? Because it would seem to me, I'm not a planner, or I mean, an architect or anything, but it would seem to me, if you go in to have those spaces there, at least some of them could be handicapped because it's near the door.
That's exactly where we have them, and we have two handicap parking spaces on the north side, and the entrance is in the corner, and then we have, and we have two there. So we have a total of four right at the access point.
Anybody, anything else? Yes, Mr. West?
I just wanted to clarify, if the stacked parking is eliminated, you eliminate the variance for the stacked parking, but you would create a variance for the number of spaces required?
I think by one, right?
Two, I think.
Two.
You had, three, right, three. You had 75, and you have... 73 is required.
73.
Yeah.
So we would eliminate...
You're eliminating five spaces, so you're down three.
We're down three.
The board would consider that as a variance in return for...
Yes.
Taking that out of the buffer area.
Yes.
I assume.
Okay, if there are no more questions, does Mr. Porter want to tell us where we are in this? Who's on first and recite the list?
Well, I'm not going to recite the list. What we understand is that the variance list has been substantially reduced, and it's been identified which variances are still being requested. We add to it the number of parking spaces by, I guess, three. The applicant has agreed to abide by all of the recommended conditions, except for the ones that have been identified in the testimony. And I don't think any added conditions have been imposed during the course of the hearing. I just want to clarify, there is the requirement for the filing of a maintenance plan for the retention area and a manual for that. I guess Mr. Scoopian has suggested that...
Yes.
As one of his conditions.
You'll comply.
There is a requirement for the DEP and the DRCC, so we're all on the same page.
And this is all subject to getting an NJDOT access permit and any other D... I guess the answer to the question of whether there was a new LOI was?
There is an LOI, it just needs to be extended. I believe it's close to being expired, but we're going to renew that.
It has been expired. Amy Jones, Dubai Environmental, reevaluated the wetland flags, has not increased. And it's not that we're just, we didn't, we're going to go for the extension, we're going to go for the extension and the flood hazard permits all in one punch. So you get an extension with the, or the extension of the LOI with your flood hazard permits. It's just a tight obligation.
So you'll get whatever NJDEP requires and NJDOT...
That's correct.
Yep. And there was a dollar amount that was in the report as...
$10,000.
It being contributed to the flashing...
Yes, it was $10,000 for the rapid flash in Beacon.
That's correct. It's a traffic contribution, off-site.
Yeah, and as noted in the report, the, all of the landscaping issues will be subject to the review and approval of the landscape subcommittee. That's one of the conditions that was in the reports.
Okay. Now that you've heard all the conditions and so on, does someone feel they could make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Oh, second motion.
It's removed in second?
So that's for major site plan approval and... site plan approval and the identified variances.
Right. Is there any? Is there any further comment? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizzioli?
Yes.
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sproul?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I know, I, I know, I, I know, I know. I, I, I mean.
That's how they're funding it.
It's more like a senior crowd. It's, it's really not. It's real, I don't ever see teenagers at those places. Like, they, they're not. Yeah. But, I mean, I can understand.
They're coming in if we ever get past the threshold.
I mean.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, a governing body issue.
Yeah.
But they could send in a check.
They do.
All right, it's a letter today that said that.
I don't think.
We're sending in a.
Because I think as. Yeah, yeah, as the commercial gets developed, the other properties become more viable for commercial use. So, then it actually can affect in positive.
I don't envy you.
We need to close the meeting.
Oh.
Need to short-circuit some of it.
Should we adjourn? Should we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.